Good evening. This is January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. in the Township Hall. This is the Genoa Township Zoning Commission. Agenda items this evening, Z case twenty twenty-four dash zero six Harris Automotive, second meeting. Zoning case twenty twenty-four dash zero seven General Christian Academy, first meeting. And twenty twenty-four dash oh five zoning resolution amendment, second meeting. Staff president this evening, Joe Schaefer, Director of Development and Zoning, and Paul Benson, Deputy Zoning Director.
We have with us Mister Tony Stocco, right? With the Delaware County Prosecues Office here, Mister Fowler was not able to join us this evening, but Tony's been gracious enough to assist us.
Tony, welcome. Nice to you. Roll call, Mister Schaefer.
Roll call, Mister Berner.
Present.
Mister James.
Here.
Mister Leff.
Here.
Mister Teisman.
Present.
Mister Welch.
Here.
Mister Wester is here. Mister Graver did tell me he was not feeling well and would probably not be here this evening.
Statement of policy, this meeting may be recorded, such recordings are public record, may be posted online, and could be subject to review in court. As is the adopted policy of the zoning commission, all applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. The audience may then be granted an opportunity to comment, followed by an applicant's response and questions from the commission. The chairperson may limit repetitive debate and reserves the following rights, to limit comment to items on the agenda, to limit public comment to five minutes per person, to restrict the number of times a member of public is permitted to speak, and to enact any other reasonable ad hoc protocols or measures necessary to maintain a fair, safe, and orderly meeting. This policy was adopted by the commission to provide for the respectful, constructive, and efficient discussion of business scheduled for consideration, and to allow for property processes required by law. First item up is the minutes from the last meeting.
Mister Chair, I would move to approve the minutes of the December meeting, December ninth, twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes as presented. A second.
Discussion, comments, roll.
Roll call, Mister Berner.
Yes.
Mister James. Mister Teisman.
Aye.
Mister Welch.
Yes.
Mister Leff.
Yes.
Motion passes and adopted. Time is now seven oh two. Let's see. Carl Russo requesting approval of final development plan amendment to construct an approximately six thousand square foot addition on approximately two point six six acres, located at six three one nine Maxtown Road, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two, PIN three one seven three, four two zero one zero one seven zero zero zero, currently zoned planned industrial district PID, also known as Harris Automotive. Zoning case number twenty twenty-four dash zero six, continued from our December ninth, twenty twenty-four, meeting. If you're speaking tonight, please rise and be sworn in. Anybody from audience, anybody here, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth to it, so have you got?
I do.
Be seated, thank you. Following were marked as exhibits A through I, A, the legal notice, B, affidavit of advertisements, C, the signing sheet, D, the application and plans originally received November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit E, the revised application and plans received December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. F, the fire marshal email dated November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. G, the staff technical review dated January sixth, twenty twenty-five, for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. H, the staff memo dated January sixth of twenty twenty-five for the thirteenth meeting. And I, all public comments received between November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and January thirteenth of twenty twenty-five. Mister Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Even though this is a continued hearing, as the commission knows, we did not present anything to you at the December meeting because the applicant asked it for continuance without any kind of presentation or discussion, so they could make some revisions to the materials. So I am going to present things this evening. I'll try to keep it as brief as I can because I know we've got a lot to get through on this agenda. So as you noted, the final development plan amendment is being proved to essentially expand the existing Harris Automotive business on Maxtown Road. The expansion is approximately six thousand square feet in size, which would bring the total size of the building if this was approved to ten thousand six hundred and eight square feet, or thereabouts. Parcel's approximately two point six six two acres of land. The proposed building contains twelve new service spaces to allow for expansion of the existing business operation. Portions of the existing site improvements would be demolished to construct the proposed expansion. These elements would generally be reconstructed elsewhere on site where possible. In terms of surrounding, I think we're all pretty familiar with this area because we've been doing a lot of applications down in this area recently. But just to sort of give you a synopsis, to the north is existing family dwellings, either zoned PRD or rural residential. To the northwest is the Al's Towing Site, zoned light industrial. To the west is J Company and the PID zoning district. To the south and southwest are high tension power lines and industrial properties within the city of Westerville city limits. And to the east is the future site of multi-sound studios, which is zoned planned commercial. So this parcel was actually part of what used to be the lot that J Company is now on. It was split off in nineteen ninety-nine. Prior to that lot split, the land was zoned PID in nineteen eighty-eight. And the original rezoning plan called for the construction of an eighty thousand square foot building on six acres. Northern Lake subdivision plot located immediately to the north was recorded in nineteen ninety-one. There were homes on Ridge Lake Court immediately adjacent were constructed between about ninety-two and ninety-four. Final development plan approval for J Company was granted in nineteen ninety-eight. The development plan did not amend the preliminary development plans that were approved with the nineteen eighty-eight rezoning for the subject lot. And then, as I mentioned, in nineteen ninety-nine, right after J Company got approved, the lot was split off. An update for the preliminary plan was approved by the trustees on March of two thousand and nine. The update was requested to provide a story easement across the northern portion of the property that could service the property known as the Hassi property to the east at six three nine one Maxtown Road, most recently decided less construction, I'm sorry. Hassi properties immediately to the east of this multi-sound is actually one lot further east. I made a mistake there. That plan revised previously granted divergence to the seventy-five foot setback for residential properties. The original divergence permitted a twenty-five foot setback. The amended divergence revised the setback to fifty feet. The fifty-foot setback provided sufficient room for the requested easement while still making the parcel marketable for development. Granting a new divergence for a twenty-five foot building setback to the east in lieu of the required hundred-foot setback was also included, as well as condition approval of Z, for ZC two thousand eight oh seven, was that, or I'm sorry. A condition of approval for ZC two thousand eight oh seven was that the final plan approval be obtained prior to the development of the subject lot. As some of you may recall, final development plan approval was granted for the lot utilizing the PID zoning and construction of the business we see here before you by the trustees on March fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. A final development plan amendment seeking to reduce acreage of the approved plan development in anticipation of a lot split was applied for in the summer of two thousand nineteen, but was later rescinded before the commission ever voted on the application. No changes are proposed for the site's existing access, nor are any required by the city of Westerville. And that's evident by the email that was provided to us from this, to the applicant from the city, November, dated November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Regarding parking, the number of proposed parking spaces exceeds the number of parking spaces required by the zoning resolution under this proposal. Approximately eleven existing spaces will be removed to accommodate the expansion. Thirty-four parking spaces will be created as a result of the expansion, however. A loading zone designated by painted stripes is proposed on the eastern end of the proposed expansion. No pedestrian access amenities are existing, proposed or required within, with the exception of an internal site sidewalk along certain portions of the front side of the building. Regarding lighting, no parking lot light fixtures are proposed, only building mounted fixtures. It appears that the intention is to install building mounted light fixtures similar to those already that exist on the site to illuminate the expanded area. Regarding landscaping, the existing green space buffer width between the homes to the north and the developed area to the south, exclusive of the stormwater basin, will be maintained. Existing trees in this area will also be maintained per plan, with the caveat that a sanitary easement runs along the north side of this property and is again subject to maintenance, including clearing by anyone holding rights to such easement. The existing fence along the rear of the developed portion of the site will be extended to provide similar screening across the back of the proposed expansion area. So if you recall, across, immediately adjacent to the northern end of the existing parking lot, there's a, there's a fence that provides total screening for those properties to the north. That fencing would be continued, that treatment would continue eastward along the proposed parking lot expansion, and then even wraps down a little bit of the eastern side there. The continuous row of boxwood shrubs is proposed along the portion of the proposed parking lot facing Maxtown Road. Several existing trees in the eastern half of the site will obviously have to be removed to construct the proposed expansion. Landscape screening is not required by the zoning resolution along most of the eastern property line due to the aforementioned commercial zoning of said property. No changes to existing signage on site appear to be proposed. And the applicant has, since the time this report was written, has verified that for us in writing. No changes to public utility connections are proposed. Regarding stormwater and drainage, the existing stormwater detention facility will be expanded eastward to accommodate the additional impervious surface areas and associated stormwater drainage infrastructure. An elevation drawing has been provided to illustrate the intended design of the proposed expansion. Regarding divergences, there were several granted that I sort of noted regarding setbacks. Visual, visual and mechanical barrier heights, they're listed there in the report. I can go into depth about them if you would like. However, they all still remain valid. They're not asking to revise any of those or rescind any of those, nor can we rescind them because they're already granted. And furthermore, no additional divergences are being requested. Again, however, they are utilizing the previously approved divergences in this proposal and have incorporated them into this design. Utilization of the subject property is, in the existing and proposed manner, is generally consistent with the Genoa Township Conference of Plan, which recommends industrial zoning slash land uses for this property. Staff's technical review is attached to this memo, which we'll get to momentarily. Only portions of the site that are being developed or revised are subject to current zoning regulations. The township cannot require the applicant to bring any existing noncompliance that is not being amended in some way, quote, up to code. Similarly, previously approved divergences cannot be rescinded, as I just noted. The applicant has opted to not copy and respond to each potential portion of the development text, but rather convey the text in a more consolidated, simplified manner, simpler, similar to what was done for the plan this proposal seeks to amend. For what it is worth, staff finds this approach to be generally acceptable so long as compliance with all applicable regulations of the resolution can sufficiently be demonstrated. This is, and staff comes to this conclusion due to the following. One, as noted, the prior development plan text was formatted in a similar way. Two, this is a plan amendment and not a new final development plan, meaning the township need only see the amended portions of the plan comply. Three, confusing and complicating factors that have existed with other previous final development plan amendment applications don't exist here. Previously approved materials are clear and more accurately reflect existing conditions relative to other similar types of applications the township has reviewed in the past. This is in part because the existing development on the site was approved somewhat recently, has not been amended multiple times before, and was generally constructed in a manner consistent with the prior approved plans. Four, large-scale revisions of the zoning resolution are currently being considered by the township, which might, amongst other things, significantly alter the order, format, and layout of the code. Rendering, and I'm sorry, there was a typo there, which would render their format moot and somewhat not matching the code should it be amended. Replicating the current code language, which is relatively time-consuming task for the applicant and uses up a lot of paper. Proposed drive aisles are significantly wider than the township requirements, presumably to accommodate larger vehicles, tow trucks, delivery trucks, et cetera. Proper intended traffic flow could be somewhat difficult to discern on such wide swaths of pavement without any traffic markings or signage, especially to those unfamiliar with the site. The applicant should consider if there are ways to communicate traffic flow. In staff's opinion, anyway. Similarly, the township will not want to see such areas become overflow storage. During the first and only meeting in two thousand nineteen regarding that case that was later rescinded, a resident did speak during the public comment period about concerns that existed regarding the removal of trees or not, and not planting trees that were promised along the northern boundary. A lack of screening along the north in the fall and the winter, tow trucks visiting at night with beacon lights and backup noises, and trash being picked up early in the morning, as well as a lack of lawn maintenance. That said, staff does not recall there being any recent complaints regarding any of those matters filed regarding, reported to us in the last, in the recent memory. So moving on, the applicant should submit documentation stating whether they believe the application should be considered a major or minor amendment according to the standards outlined in section twenty-seven, ten oh three of the zoning resolution. Revisions of the final development plan, as well as this amendment, are limited to those requested herein unless otherwise approved by the zoning inspector under the authority provided to such in section twenty-seven, ten oh one of the resolution. Approval of the amendment would be subject to the time limits outlined in twenty-seven, twelve dot nineteen of the resolution, which is currently three years. And if this application is approved, the applicant will have to apply for and obtain a zoning permit before construction of the expansion commits. That concludes my memo. In regards to my staff technical review, you can see the continuance that they requested was beneficial as they pretty much addressed all of my outstanding comments that I had in the report. There weren't a ton to begin with. This proposal was relatively straightforward and with having, with having gone through the wash a few times before with some of those divergences relative to the setbacks and the buffering, it really simplified the review. The only comment that was outstanding was regarding the sign, and like I said, we've gotten written notification that they have no, this proposal does not include any revisions to the sign. So with that, Mister Chairman, I will turn the floor back over to you.
Turn it over to the applicants. We can turn both mics on, name and address, and then go forward.
Brian Harris. I'll just give you the address, six three one nine Maxtown Road, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two.
Aaron Willie, six three one nine Maxtown Road.
McKenzie Oak, one four nine five Old Henderson Road.
Brian, floor is yours.
All right. Well, I mean, I think Joe covered it pretty well. We're just looking to expand and develop the other side of our lot. Our business has grown and we need the space. I mean, we're packing, we're, we're struggling to keep up with what we have there now, so we, you know, we need to expand, so. As far as, I mean, it's a pretty simple addition. You know, it's going to match, as far as the building goes, it's going to look identical to the building we have now, you know, same stonework across the front. I think I'll say to you, the parking lot, you know, we've got substantial parking for, for customer vehicles. As far as Joe mentioned, as far as marking for traffic coming in and out, we don't have that much where people are coming all day, you know, all day, in and out, in and out. I mean, it's usually a drop-off in the morning, pick-up in the evening type of thing, where the cars are there all day, or there a couple days or several days. So, you know, we don't have hundreds of people moving in and out, and it's pretty explanatory, you know, self-explanatory where to go and park. So I don't really see any reason to, you know, put arrows or anything in the parking lot, too. I think it would be kind of tacky, actually. But that's, you know, I just wanted to address that, so. Another thing I noted on here, too, is our, our business hours they have. We are not open on Saturdays anymore, which I know the residents will probably appreciate. But we, we close Saturdays when COVID hit. We never reopen Saturdays, so I know it says in the, the thing, we're open nine to two, we're not. But that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, we've said, we're not asking for any divergences or any, any special treatment. It's just a simple addition to, to grow our business.
Do you want anything else? All right, public comments. Anybody from public speaking about this one? Go to the mic if you can make sure the button gets pushed to green and your name and address, please.
My name is Rex Harris. I live at seventy twelve Labor Lane, just across the street here. And I just want to say that in the time that Harris Automotive has been down there, they've been a great benefit to the community in terms of, obviously, employment for a lot of people. But they provide a nice, clean facility, modern facility, where people in the area can get their car serviced. It's been a, it's been a blessing, really, for this whole community. They've also been very mindful about their neighbors down there. They, they've gone to great lengths to, to, to take care to, like, the building of the fence and keeping the property up and stuff like that, so nearby, people that live there, nearby there, aren't disturbed and bothered. Obviously, you can't prevent everything like tow trucks and garbage trucks, but he has no control over that, so. I just wanted to say, I think this should be approved, and I expect it to be a continued blessing to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll say it one more time.
Yeah, hang on, we'll come back. Any bells public wise? One once, one twice? All right, public comments now closed. Go ahead, Brian.
I just want to say in regards to that meeting in two thousand nineteen that Joe mentioned, because we were not there, present at that meeting. And we haven't had any complaints from those people. We have mounted, you know, there's a huge mountain back there. We did plant trees, pine trees back there in the corner for those people. You know, I don't know why they were speaking. They did call, you know, when we first opened, they complained about the tow trucks and the trash trucks, but we've rectified that. Our trash comes in the middle of the day, it doesn't come in the mornings. And, you know, tow trucks, I can't help if somebody breaks down at three o'clock in the morning and they got to tow their car. I mean, it's just, it happens, or midnight, or whatever it is, but, and like he said, we've had no complaints from any neighbors since twenty-nine, since that happened in two thousand nineteen, so, right after we built it. I just wanted to say that, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. You just took a question off my list. Any initial questions or comments?
I just have an inconsistency with the texts and what Joe says. So in thirteen oh three, oh three states that there's a twenty-five foot green space provided, and Joe is talking about a fifty foot, that fifty foot buffer that was granted as a divergence, so which one is it? And then just change it in the text, I guess. Yeah, it's in your memorandum. Dick in the memo. But I could be wrong.
So I think it was refused.
Did you ask me about the original divergence request?
Yeah, Joe is speaking about a divergence that was granted instead of the, how much is it normally? Seventy-five feet?
So at the time, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when it came through, it was a seventy-five foot. There was original divergence to go down to twenty-five feet, however, the amended divergence revised that setback back to fifty feet.
Okay, well, I'm just, would suggest to change the text. I mean, that's possible. Because now it states.
So it's fifty feet in the north, twenty-five feet to the east. I want you to go real quick and throw out a lot of numbers, so there was a lot of moving parts of that, so it should be twenty-five feet underneath fifty.
Okay. Do we want the text to reflect this?
Which text needs to be?
Uh, I mean, their text.
Development text. Okay, so which? So currently thirteen oh three, oh three, we've got two pieces, twenty-five foot green spaces provided where lot lines are adjacent to PRD and the mechanical barrier. What you're saying?
Well, I mean, because, because if, if you read the text of Joe, Joe is talking about fifty feet, so I'm just confused which one it is.
Fifty or twenty-five. Fifty and the back of twenty-five on the side.
Well, I mean, that's, put it in the text, I would.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems to be a.
That was all granted back in the nineties, correct?
I, I think that tech, that must, that may have been there from, they basically just repeated the plan from two thousand nineteen in that section. So it's possible that that was just oversight in the last review from eighteen that's just going to be caught in terms of the clarification, like, it's a, the setbacks keep changing here over the years of the plans, so, yeah, I agree that we probably just need to make sure the text is tightened up. I, I don't think what they're showing in the plan is not compliant, but I agree we probably need to just work with them before the permit gets issued to make sure that text is accurate.
And then the same with point six there, thirteen oh three oh six, there is like no number for, I mean, I know it's on the plan, but just put it in the text. I think the plan says it's forty-one point fifty-one percent.
Thirteen oh three oh six in the back?
Yeah, just, it says nothing, so. On the plan, it's mentioned on the plan, when I was looking at the plan, it's stated on, like a side note.
What was that one again? The data on what?
That was thirteen oh three oh six, the impervious surface percentage. I have a note on thirteen oh three oh nine, you said something about a divergence there, Joe? And I, I just don't understand what this divergence was exactly. It was about automobile parking as a screen per article twenty.
Yeah, that was a prior divergence that they have received.
Okay. Is that the one that is, is that the one that talks about it having around the, because, I mean, it says, it says it's a divergence, but you do, do a fence, which, which is confusing to me. Because if it would be a divergence, wouldn't it be the opposite, that you don't have to do a fence, but they do do a fence?
No, because originally, in twenty eighteen, we weren't going to do a fence, but we offered to do it just to be nice to the neighbors, so.
Okay, so you have a divergence for a fence, not to do a fence, but you do a fence anyway. Okay.
And we just offered that. I didn't have to do it, but it was just something we offered for the, the people behind us, so they don't want to see parked cars back there in the parking lot.
Yeah, that makes sense. So you were talking a little bit about that, that additional mounting with the trees, so where is that on the plan? I don't know if you can.
It's in, it's right, it's not, you can't see it on that picture, but it's on, right on the property lines, between the houses and our property.
Oh, probably can you get a little?
Just in front of that, or I guess on the, would be the north side of the easement is where we have that mounting. It's right up, right on the property line.
So just north of the, just.
Just north of where that.
Detention area into the mound.
That twenty-five foot green space is all, you know, six, eight foot mounting back there.
Still a question about the, the detention ponds? I mean, they're not like super visible on that, on the, on the.
To be honest, there's never any water in those retention ponds.
It's just an error.
Put them in for the stormwater management. They're not ponds. They're just depressions. They're not ponds, they're just depress, they're just the, like a low area.
Swale was allowed for that one.
Yeah, okay.
Any water?
No. I think I'm pretty much done.
I don't know if this should be directed to Joe or to you guys, do you have anybody from Sands Decker here with you?
I am.
Mackenzie, I'm sorry. There was an email exchange between Mark Antonets and City of Westerville. And on the eighth, or I should say, October twenty-fifth, it looks like Mark reached out to Rob and asked if he could get approval for the revised storm, uh, stormwater report. I didn't see anything on that where it would be tying into the existing stormwater. City of Westerville was supposed to get back to you with a letter, do you have that?
I do not have that, um, the intent is to use the existing outlet to the City of Westerville.
Right, but the, City of Westerville was gonna review that and approve that. Have they done that?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, we have an email back on November eleventh, it says the city has no concerns with the building condition as provided.
The eleventh is find the existing entrance, nothing about the stormwater.
And that I couldn't tell you, cause I know that we have to submit that to Delaware County as far as the stormwater management does not.
Well, I think Joe mentioned that, that Delaware County was gonna be involved with that, but also he had reached out to Westerville. So I didn't know if you guys are gonna be going back and forth or which way.
As far as I know, no. I, I think Westerville is pretty much satisfied, we're not asking to hook up any new, other than what is currently already hooked up, so. All the new impervious is, I mean, it'll be hooked to that system, but it's also gonna be, you know, directed to the, you know, retention pond supposedly. But yeah, I don't, I don't see them having any issue.
The, the new impervious area will be handled with an extension to the existing detention basin. We're gonna utilize the existing outlet to the City of Westerville.
Okay, but have they approved that?
Not to my knowledge, not yet.
That's something I probably should think about. Uh, my next question would be about the, uh, lighting, you submitted an excellent diagram for the lighting with the down on the building, but you have additional parking now, and as you said, that you're gonna have cars maybe a day or two more. Have you thought about pole lighting? For security reasons?
Cause I don't, I don't think we need it, I mean, there's plenty of lighting now with the lights that we have on the building, on the parking. I mean, same thing there, the bill, the lights, those downlights are gonna wrap all the way around that building, which would be plenty of light at parking lot.
Revised submission that you gave, it shows that it's pretty much non-existent at the edge of your parking. Your lighting fades out. Goes down to zero, so my concern is an attractive nuisance and vehicles are in your care, custody and control.
Right.
So protecting your customers' vehicles would be something I would think about. And with the sound studio just being put in, they have the, just straight down LED lights.
They do, they do.
So it shouldn't be a effect via neighbors to the north.
I don't know, they, they, you know, they did say something about that at the last hearing in twenty eighteen, when they did bring up the downlights, and I told them we didn't really wanna put downlights in the parking lot back then. And I don't think J.C. Manning or any of the people have, have lights.
Of course, I, that's one of the things I appreciate about that part, uh, when you're going down Maxtown Road from state, you have parking lot, um, lots on all, all three of the four corners with lots and lots of downlights that are very, very bright. But once you pass Worthington Industries and you get to, um, this part of the road, it's quieter, it's darker, it's quieter. Inherently, people slow down. That area at Hillmar Drive sees a lot of accidents. So I think just pa- passive traffic management is nice. If it's not required by the zoning ordinance, I would like to not see additional lighting, uh, because it takes away from what is predominantly a residential area. There's this sort of little strip up to Hillmar Drive, but then it's all residential. We start encroaching that direction, I just get worried about the houses that are there.
If you're looking at that diagram, you know, some of that, like our front parking lot, you know, our front lights light up that entire front parking lot, and it's saying zero right there, right now, so, I mean, our whole front lot is pretty well lit.
The streetlights also add, adding to your light. So it's flooding in from there, which is fantastic, it hasn't been an issue.
And there is another streetlight on that, the new proposed side of the parking lot on the east side of the drive, there is a streetlight right there, in, in the yard.
My concern is you have parking running, the east side running north to south, correct? When you get back to that back corner, or even behind, that's, I think you had an incident there about a year ago, correct?
No, we didn't have any break-ins, we, wow, they, that was in broad daylight, that was in broad daylight.
Unfortunately, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we were all there and open when that happened, so it's, uh, no, I mean, other than that, we've never, I mean, I've never had any car break-ins, not on wood, um, we never had any cars stolen. But not to say, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, I would rather not put pole lights in, I think it just kinda, you know, it's overkill, it doesn't need it. You know, if it's not a zoning requirement, I would rather not do it, I mean, I think it's well lit up. You know, even the, the Haci company's got lights that'll shine over there, I mean, we're gonna be pretty close to their property line, um, I mean, I think it'd be lit. And those lights are pretty bright.
Then the other question I had.
At the back, like the back of the current shop where it says zero zeros all back there, that whole, that whole back parking lot is lit up as bright as can be right now, with just the lights that are on the building, so. You know, I don't really buy all that zeros from their diagram, so.
I know when I drive by and it's snowing, there's a floodlight there, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
That, that's all I had.
Okay. I have a follow-up question about, about that. Okay, one of, one of the things I like about this part of Maxtown Road is it still ha- has semblances of the residential area. J.C. Manning, the, the house that's being renovated right now, Harris has that scale. And one of the things that's nice about it is when we drive by, you don't see Firestone, a dozen garage bays. You also don't see a ton of parking in the front, you have some in the front, speaks to customers coming in and out, car storage is sort of on the side or the rear. But I could also see as a business owner how that could be detrimental, because you're wanting to say you're an automotive shop, but it's hard to see the garage bays. So, you know, I could, I'm inclined to want to push that back and just extend your garage, your garage base back, but that's not how it's operating, and I understand the business desire to have that towards the front. And I think you've done a nice job at not just putting all the parking in the front, but you have some in the rear, some on the side, you're extending that. Can you explain a little bit operationally how the, uh, how parking of cars works there? Where are staff predominantly parking? Where are the overnight vehicles that are waiting to be serviced parking? And where are customers that are coming in and out of the store, uh, parking?
Um, in general, varies, I mean, most of the cars sitting out front are done. The cars sitting out, you know, any cars that are overnight are typically out back or in the building. You know, we try to keep a lot of cars inside, I mean, the, inside the shop is always full. Yeah, most of the cars being worked on, I would say, would be parked over here on the eastern side, um, and out back on the, the north side. You know, out at the front, we try to just back cars in as we've done, I mean, those front parking spaces are usually for pickups, you know, we wanna try to keep them as close to the office for when people come pick them up. So that, you know, that's pretty much how it works. You know, I mean, we don't have cars a super long time, um, I mean, unless we're waiting on parts, I mean, ninety percent of our cars are in and out within a day or so, I mean, a day or two, so. But that's pretty much what it is, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I'm just wondering operationally if there's any ways to, to help assuage some of that, where, you know, the overnight cars are parking closer to where the lights are, and the cars that are gonna be picked up that day could be parked, you know, somewhere else that you maybe don't want cars parking at night. Another comment I had, question maybe, is, uh, the required parking is thirty-two, you're providing fifty-eight. Can you explain the need for that much more parking?
Because we do a lot of business, so, I mean, right now, we're averaging twenty-five to thirty cars a day at the shop, and we could probably push that to fifty cars a day. And now granted, a lot of that is service work, I mean, we have oil changes coming and going, it's not like we have fifty cars that are there all day long. But we are busy, I mean, we're slam busy and it's just growing. You know, the goal for this, you know, the addition is going to be our regular cars that we're gonna be working on, the current building is gonna become our like performance and hot rod shop to work on classic cars, which all those cars will be inside a hundred percent of the time, so, um, you know, we don't let those cars sit outside, which we've also been struggling with, because we've, we've had a huge demand, people want us to fix their classic cars and stuff, and I can't take more than one or two of them at a time, so, as it is now, because we can't keep them outside. But that's, you know, I mean, I think, you know, we need the parking, I mean, right now, we're stacked, I mean, you guys are driven by, we got cars in the grass. I mean, it's, you know, because we're just so, so busy, I mean, it's just growing and growing, so. You know, we, that's just, we try to take care of people and they keep coming back, I mean, right now, just in the last, what, six months, I mean, we're averaging, you know, ten to twenty new customers a day, or a week, I'm not, sorry, not a day, a week. So I mean, we're, it's just growing, so, yeah, we need the fifty some parking spaces.
So the conversation with Sands, and I, and I appreciate, I think, you know, overall, I think the design is subtle, it's nice, it works well with the site, it's not needing any divergences, which is great. It seems to be, in accordance to the calculations, below, excuse me, a fifty percent threshold of impervious area. Uh, how was the conversation with Sands, so, so generally, I'm positive, you know, and, and for the scheme, but how was the conversation with Sands Decker, it's like, hey, the park, you know, parking requirement's thirty-eight, what triggered, you know, was there analysis, what brings us to fifty-eight as the key number, why not sixty-one and fifty-five?
I mean, to be honest with you, I hand drew this on a piece of paper probably two, two and a half years ago, and that's, I handed it to Mark and said, here, well, this is what we wanna do, so. They didn't really have any say-so, I mean, I'm just trying to maximize as much parking as we can per, you know, what we have as far as our lot, so. You know, we have that huge lot just sitting there vacant, doing nothing.
Understood, now, all that makes sense, so my request is this. So, we're going above and beyond the zoning ordinance, we're finding a lot more asphalt. As part of the zoning commission, as we're rewriting the zoning ordinance, we're kinda paring down some of our parking requirements to get rid of, uh, excess asphalt, in particular in this area. And I mentioned the sensitivity of this particular zone as it really is kinda tucked in a residential area. Uh, my request is this, we are, we are removing some trees, and we're not replacing these trees, and I know it's not necessarily required, but I'd like to replace them.
Well, that's not true, because we are replacing them.
Okay.
There's only two trees being cut down, so I know they said several trees, but there's only two big trees that have been cut down to do this. And we will replace trees, I mean, you know, on this parking island out front, there's gonna be a tree there. Um, I'll probably put another one on the, that far southeast corner of the parking, we'll put another, you know, like big tree there, which Mark doesn't have on here, but I did plan on at least planting some trees, so. We do have trees in the islands now, um, you know, the parking islands that are currently there have nice trees planted that we planted. You know, so we will take care of it as far as that goes in landscaping, I do plan on planting those trees out front, just to make, you know, we want it to look nice and look upscale, I don't want it to look like a dumpy establishment on a rundown shop, so.
I would like to see more. Uh, there's two we're taking down, and the two that are being replaced, where are they on the plans?
Mark doesn't have them on here, but I plan on, so on the front island, we're doing a little island right here where the drive is. Nope, next one, that, one there where you're finger, yep, both of those, yep. So on that island, and then, we'll probably put something back there in the corner, we were gonna do the dumpster, but then they had a, you know, they wanted the dumpster screened, so I'm just gonna leave the dumpster where it's at, we're not gonna move it. So, we probably will do a nice flower bed back there in that northeast corner. So, yeah.
Can we screen more of the southeast where the area where the trees are being removed? Uh, we are putting in the berm, the seven, Plan Note seventeen, the boxwood bushes as required by the zoning resolution. We're losing two in that corner, I think you're, you're saying you're gonna put some more back, can we get them on the plans? And it would be great if we could go above and beyond, you've gone above and beyond with parking, maybe we can go above and beyond and screen that little area, it won't block the views of either your sign, it won't block the views of the new garage bays, so you're, it's a win-win.
What are you talking about?
Just the southeast corner of that site to block the, that portion of the new parking lot.
Southeast, well, I have a, yeah, so I'm, I do plan on, you know, planting like a, I don't know, probably like a maple or some kind of regular tree there. I don't want a whole bunch of, of stuff planted there, um, you know, along that property line, there's already a lot of, of greenage, I mean, there's cattails and there's a lot of, I mean, there's eight foot tall cattails that run all along that property line between us and Haci. There is a lot of screening there, there's a lot of trees already there on that corner. As far as on the property line between us and Haci's property, um, you know, there are a ton of trees still there.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about that, I'm mo- I'm just more thinking about the approach on Maxtown Road. I'd like to see them on the plans, we were talking about, we're going to plant some there, I think we could get them on there. Uh, again, if we're going above and beyond with the parking, can we go a little bit above and beyond with the, you know, trees that we're gonna remove? I think that would be nice to maintain some of that character.
We would, I mean, I definitely would, I mean, it's gonna have, I mean, we've already proposed a screening of the boxwoods all the way across the front, which will block the headlights and stuff from coming out on the road. And that parking lot is set way back further than the existing front parking lot too, so.
I did notice that, I appreciate that.
On Maxtown Road, there's a definite distance there, there's gonna be a nice green space, a nice yard out in front of that, there'll be a raised flower bed where those boxwoods are in front of those parking spaces. It'll all be nicely mulched, nicely edged, um, I mean, we try to keep the shop looking pretty good, so.
I think maybe, rather than going with the solid boxwoods in a row in that way, raised bed, if you look further to your west, it was a Jay, Home Depot, they've got, uh, like flowering cherry trees or something like that, if you could interspurt, inters, put some of those in between or something like that.
We could, the last time, you know, they made us put the boxwoods across the front last time to block headlights, because they didn't want headlights shining out into Maxtown Road to distract drivers. So that's why we proposed doing the same boxwoods across the front there.
Okay. I'm not saying put the whole thing that way.
Yeah, 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 I, I know what you're saying.
Anchor in the ends.
But there will be, I mean, on the end of that, where those boxwoods are, on that white parking island that kinda circles there, there's gonna be a tree there, that'll be a nice mulch flower bed. And then, like I said, we'll, we'll, I don't have any problems with planting another tree on that other side on that southeast corner, and making that a nice raised flower bed as well. So, it's not a big deal.
What's your total staffing gonna be?
Staffing? That I don't know. It's hard to hire people, but it's, yeah, I mean, I, I would say probably ten people will be working there.
What do you have now?
We have seven.
Mine was going down the parking question there, but see, you've more than evaluated for that, okay. Anything else?
And all the employees do park in the back, so you did ask that, I didn't answer that, so, all the employees work out back.
All right. Any discussion up here then?
I guess my question is, is this a major or a minor amendment?
Six thousand square foot addition, I would personally think that's.
I'm sorry?
That's a major to me.
Well, I, I would agree, I mean, I was going through the, the criteria twenty-seven ten oh three. Not that I don't support the project, don't get me wrong, but I think, I mean, we're more than doubling the square footage of structure on the site. I agree, I think it qualifies as a major amendment. While certainly in line and not requiring any divergences.
Anybody disagree?
At least with the first part.
Do you have the, do you have the notes for, with the other things?
Well, the, yes, in terms of whether or not the commission gets to an approval, I have, my notes are to amend the text to address thirteen oh three point oh three, thirteen oh three point oh six, and then the addition of to the property as was discussed. Is there anything else I missed, cause the sign issue, Mr. Schaefer said was addressed.
Thirteen oh three with the fifty and twenty-five, thirteen oh three oh six with impervious percentage, stormwater letter approval and landscaping.
Correct.
Catch everything? Wanna make a motion?
Yes, so Mr. Chair, I would start off with, section twenty-seven ten point oh three, uh, should a final development plan amendment request represent a substantial departure from the intent of the original proposal, i.e. a major amendment, said modification or amendment shall be subject to submission requirements and procedures set forth herein. The following shall be considered substantial departures from the original application, and following review and recommendation of the zoning commission shall be, shall be subject to final consideration by the township trustees. And so I would, uh, suggest to my fellow commission members that And so I would, uh, suggest to my fellow commission members that, because we are having a significant increase in overall coverage of structures, that this would be a major amendment. Therefore, I would move to declare the subject final development plan amendment application Carl Ruser, zoning commission case number twenty-two-four dash zero six, including all plans and materials, a major amendment of the final development plan per section twenty-seven, ten point oh three of the Genoa Township zoning resolution, thus requiring subsequent action by the board of trustees. Uh, this motion is being made due to the fact that, uh, this is a significant increase, or the proposal is a significant increase in overall coverage of structures on the site.
Would you like to add the additional requirements?
That's part of the second motion, the approval motion.
Oh, okay. I keep forgetting we don't do that all at once. Okay, motion's on table?
I'll second.
Motion's secured. Discussion. Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Hi.
Mr. Teisman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Leff?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to recommend approval of the following to the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. The subject final development plan application deemed to be a major amendment pursuant to section twenty-seven, ten point oh three, including all plans and materials submitted by Carl Ruser to construct an approximately six thousand square foot addition on approximately two point six six two acres of property located at six-three-one-nine Maxtown Road, Westerville, Ohio, four-three-zero-eight-two, currently zoned plan industrial district, zoning commission case number twenty-two-four dash zero six, incorporating exhibits A through I and any commitments made by the applicant during this hearing, which are the following. To update or amend their, um, final development plan amendment text to address the inconsistency in, uh, section thirteen oh three point oh three regarding, uh, the setbacks, uh, which were approved in their previous divergences from the, uh, one of their previous, um, development plan amendments. Uh, and then to update section thirteen oh three point oh six, uh, which is missing the amount of total impervious area. It's just not cited in the text. And then the commitment to add, uh, landscaping and trees to the property, based on the removal of the trees that are, uh, being removed, uh, to the construct project. I'm sorry?
And stormwater letter?
Uh, yes, and to provide the stormwater letter or approval from the city of Westerville, since that was not clarified in the email correspondence with, or between Mr. Antonets and, uh, the city of Westerville. Just to make sure that we have that as part of the record. I think that's it.
I'll second.
You want a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Second? Discussion? Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Hi.
Mr. Teisman?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Leff?
Yes. Motion passes. Time is now seven forty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to see you doing great business and glad you're, uh, expanding.
Information, I will take this application to the trustees at their next regular meeting, which is the February, it's a Tuesday in February. They just changed the dates on us for this year, so I'm sorry. Um, but I'll get you that date. They'll have to acknowledge receipt of this and then schedule the public hearing, because they schedule those ad hoc. So, um, my guess is your hearing will probably be sometime in late February or early March with the trustees.
Sounds good. Sounds wonderful. Thank you. You guys have a good night.
You too.
All right. Uh, time is now seven fifty P M. Genoa Christian Academy requesting approval of a final development plan amendment to construct an approximately six thousand square foot accessory building on approximately eighty-six point three acres at four-three-seven-nine Worthington Road and seven-five-six-two Lewis Center Road, Westerville, Ohio, four-three-zero-eight-two. A religious establishment and school currently zoned planned commercial facility, P C F. This is zoning case number twenty-two-four dash zero seven. Anybody speaking on behalf, please rise, be sworn in. Anybody from the public gonna speak as well, raise your right hand. Do you swear that you tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, be seated. The legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on January first, twenty-twenty-five in the Delaware Gazette and posted at the Genoa Township Hall on December twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. An attempt to mail notice of this hearing to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property was also made. The following were marked as exhibits A through H, A, the legal notice, B, affidavit of advertisement, C, the sign-in sheet, D, application and plans, originally received December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, E, the fire marshal email dated January sixth, twenty-twenty-five, F, staff technical review dated January sixth, twenty-twenty-five for January thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, G, the staff memo dated January sixth, twenty-twenty-five for January thirteen, twenty-five, and H, all public comments received between December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four and January thirteen, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The legal description's obviously pretty, uh, clear on what is being proposed here this evening. Um, I think we're all pretty familiar with the site, so I'm not gonna read this memorandum verbatim like I did the other one. Obviously, we have Genoa Baptist Church here, Genoa Christian Academy's on this site, and proposing accessory storage building of approximately six thousand square feet, as noted, um, to the property, as well as some associated, uh, parking spaces, which include seven standard parking spaces, the ninety-degree turn-in space type, and three parallel spaces in that little lot there. Um, the subject project would occur in one phase, would not change the principal use in the development. The exterior of the proposed building will consist of metal panels and a color to complement the existing red-tone C M U veneer of other buildings on the site. The color of the roof will be selected in a similar fashion per the development text. A garage door would be located on the northern end of the building, while man doors would be provided on the eastern and western sides of the building. No changes to access stormwater management or utilities to the site are proposed. The existing drive aisle and dumpster enclosure would be reworked and incorporated into the revision to accommodate the proposal. The height of the proposed building is approximately twenty-six feet and seven inches, several feet shorter than the existing church and school buildings. No additional revised signage proposed in this application. One additional parking lot fixture standing twenty feet tall would be installed. Design will match the other fixtures already on the site. The site has a lot of history, and some of the prior memos that we have on record from some of the other cases go, uh, deeper into it. So I was gonna refrain from repeating all of that here and just concentrate on sort of the big picture, more recent things. The property was rezoned back in two thousand and five to the planned community facilities district that it's in. And obviously, um, picking up on that, it got included in the Hoover watershed overlay when that got adopted a year or two ago. Uh, numerous applications between two thousand and four now have been filed with the township covering a variety of topics and altering the original master plan. Uh, final development plan amendment approval was granted by the trustees in August of twenty nineteen. Um, that was for the church expansion, the sanctuary, the canopy, a bunch of additional parking spaces, additional sight lighting, the second ground mounted sign, and really relocation of the soccer field in, in addition of a play area. And then, as you can see, numerous zoning permits for all that work were issued, um, in the subsequent years. Uh, final development plan amendment approval was granted by the trustees again in May twenty-twenty-one. That application approved the construction of the Genoa Christian Academy, which is now built, uh, open and operating, as well as parking lot expansion, relocation of the soccer field again, and access drive to, uh, Worthington Road, and expansion of the play area adjacent to the existing church building. Again, several zoning permits followed after that, uh, authorizing all that work. The applicant met with staff to introduce and discuss this proposal several months ago. I believe it was probably back in around August or so. Uh, staff determined that the scope of the project was too large, should be administratively approved under the terms of section twenty-seven, ten oh one of the resolution, hence the subject application. And they said they wanted to build an accessory building. I thought, oh, maybe I can administratively approve that. That doesn't sound like a big deal. But then when I saw the, the size of the accessory building, I thought to myself, well, at six thousand square feet, I, I think someone's gonna notice that if it just goes up and without any zoning commissioner, uh, township approval other than the permit. So that's why I recommended it come, um, back through this process. There in front of you have the site development table, um, sort of pared down to only focus on the things relevant to this proposal. The acreage of the site has actually been slightly decreased because of right-of-way acquisition. They're down to eighty-six point three acres. Um, the maximum square footage first floor of the site, um, as you can see, they're still well below, um, what the code permits at, um, one hundred and eighty-six thousand sixty-six square feet. There are some discrepancies in their, their numbers, but I talked with Mr. Jeff Hutchison today, and he, he believes our numbers are correct, so they'll update the materials accordingly. Open space, they are in compliance with our standard. They, uh, currently proposing open space in the amount of sixty-six point three percent of the site, which equates out to about fifty, fifty-seven point two acres. It's a slight decrease, um, from, uh, the sixty-seven percent that was on the site, but again, they're obviously adding some building and parking lot, and the site did get slightly smaller, so it's not surprising to see that number dropped just a little bit, but still well above the forty percent required by code. Parking, um, they're proposing seven hundred and ninety-eight spaces, seven, they, um, seven hundred and eighty-eight were existing, although, again, talking with Mr. Hutchison, he agrees that the discrepancy, that there are seven hundred and eighty-nine spaces on the site plus ten new. So that figure actually is probably seven hundred and ninety-nine total parking spaces will now be on the site, which is, um, compliant. In reviewing this, I didn't feel like this site triggered the need to, um, from a regulatory standpoint, increase the number of acquired parking spaces on the site. This is an accessory building and not a, a principal building. Basically, it's just functioning association with the church and the school, so it's really not generating any additional parking demand. They're probably just now giving a place for people who are already parking on that site, just somewhere else to park closer to where they're probably gonna be doing the work in that accessory building. So I believe they're compliant in that aspect. In terms of landscaping, nine additional trees will be planted on the western side of the improved area, four additional trees and three shrubs will be planted on the eastern side of said area. They have, um, no divergences or requests in the materials. In reviewing the application, I do believe they probably do need to ask for one, because they are subject to, to the Hoover watershed overlay. Um, the watershed overlay in section seven oh three dot one-four, stipulates that no, um, structure or commonly controlled business would, would exceed twenty thousand square feet. Obviously, this, this site has already well exceeded that and has grandfathered in. However, since they're proposing to increase that what is basically illegal nonconformity, um, the best way to handle that, in my opinion, would be to grant a divergence to that. So it'll be up to the commission, and I talked to Mr. Hutchison today about this, uh, sort of, does the commission wanna grant the divergence just to allow for the six thousand square feet? Does the commission wanna increase that twenty thousand square feet to another number above the ask to provide them room to grow further in the future? Do they wanna erase it completely? I, I was sort of leaning probably just towards granting it just for the additional six thousand square feet that's being requested, knowing that if they wanna come back and build more buildings, we will have to have that conversation again and revise the divergence. But, um, since they don't have a master plan in front of us, I'm not sure there's really a number we could just pull out of thin air and, and propose. So I think that's sort of where, uh, staff was leaning. I think that's where the applicant was leaning, at least is per the phone conversation today. Obviously, if they wanna propose something different, um, this evening, they will during their portion of the presentation. So that would need to get documented, um, as part of the record, if they are agreeable to such a request. Uh, staff's technical review is attached to the memo. Um, portions of the materials will need slight revision to provide for accuracy and consistency, as I talked about some of those square footage and parking discrepancies. However, there are no major code concerns other than the aforementioned divergence issue. Uh, staff reviewed this application with the understanding that current zoning standards can only be applied to any new or revised improvements, just like I discussed during the Harris, um, case. We're not going back and trying to relitigate or re-review anything that's already been approved, divergence, design or otherwise. Uh, I did review the application against the requirements of the Hoover watershed overlay district, as is evident by my divergence comment. Since the overlay was implemented after the last development plan amendment application was approved for the site, only the improvements proposed within this application are subject to the requirements of the overlay in my estimation. As such, given the limited scale the proposed relative, of the proposal relative to the rest of the site and prior divergences granted for the overall development, many overlay requirements are found to be partially or wholly inapplicable apart from the previously, again, recommended divergence. Uh, for example, there's a bunch of requirements found in section seven oh three oh three A, one, two, and four, as well as seven oh three oh three B pertaining to buffers. There's, um, there's a section on critical resource protection, site layout, stormwater and streets, none of which I, in my, um, review, I felt like applied. Similarly, I don't believe any of the requirements, seven oh three ten, um, which talks about sidewalks would apply since improvements are an amendment to an already existing development, not located, and they're not located anywhere near any of the existing street frontages. And the proposal is accessory in nature, and are not putting any new principal uses here. Uh, also, the existing development is constructed near or right up to much of State Route three's right-of-way, uh, leaving little, if any, room for any pedestrian improvements along that corridor. Perimeter buffer requirements found in section seven oh three oh three A three and seven oh three oh three B two through seven oh three oh three D are applicable, but only to the perimeter lot lines in the immediate vicinity of the proposed building. The proposal meets and exceeds the hundred-foot setback requirement already. Existing vegetation in this area previously used to adhere to township landscape regulations, in my opinion, sufficiently comply with the Hoover watershed overlay landscaping requirements in that section of the site, um, per the code. The plans and documents in the submission would serve as an addendum to the prior final development plan amendment approval that are on file from twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty-one. Any designs, agreements, et cetera, not expressly proposed for alteration in the subject application would obviously remain in effect and enforceable per those prior cases issued zoning permits, any administrative approvals, et cetera. Uh, the submissions, December sixteen, twenty twenty-four cover later, letter indicates that the applicant believes that the proposed amendment qualifies as a minor amendment under the terms of section twenty-seven, ten oh three of the resolution. I'm sure they can speak to that more during their presentation. If approved, the action of the board would be an administrative act, or the trustees, rather, would be that as of an administrative action. I'm sorry, let me rewind. You're, you're, you're working on whether this is gonna be a recommendation or just a flat-out vote if it's a minor amendment. Regardless, any action that's taken to ultimately approve this is not a legislative action. It's an administrative action pursuant to the zoning resolution. Uh, administrative actions, um, aren't subject to referendum essentially. Um, that's the crux of what you need to know from that bullet point there. Uh, the legislative act of rezoning the property as well as the subsequent referendum would have occurred back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, when the original rezoning happened. Under the terms of the current resolution, um, an approved final development plan, as I stated during the Harris hearing, is three years. Um, even if such terms are not noted in the motion of approval, um, they have to just pull a zoning permit within that time. I can't imagine that would be a problem for them to do that, given the scale of the proposal. Obviously, if they did reach the three-year point, the proposal would become null and void unless they request an extension from the trustees. Moving on to the tech review, um, again, I didn't have, I don't really have any other commentary to add other than what I've already talked about, some of the, the counting, the square footage parking count discrepancies that they said they're gonna take care of. I wanted to just see labeled on drawing C two that the proposed parking drive aisle is at least twenty feet wide, although I believe the tech speaks to that fact. I always like to see that measurement on the drawing. Uh, again, some of it's just tightening up the language, like in section fourteen oh four oh one, to just clarify that they're proposing accessory building. Sorry, I thought there was one more. Oh, they got the, the old site acreage is referenced at one point. That needs to be corrected. We already talked about the divergence on, they got the address wrong in the cover letter. So, um, as you can see, nothing what I would call major red flags, um, just a lot of cleanup, polishing kind of things, and then just the divergence discussion. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. You guys can turn your mics on. Make them green. Name an address, and we'll go from there.
Um, my name is Jeff Hutchison. I'm with the McKnight Group at three-three, three-three-five-one McDowell Road, Grove City, Ohio.
Scott Leewald, and I'll give the church address, seventy-five sixty-two Lewis Center Road.
Joe Stoll.
Church address.
Oh, seven-five-six-two Lewis Center Road, Westerville, four-three-zero-eight-two.
Uh, Aaron Hidingear and Candy Hidingear Group, five-six-seven-six State Route five-twenty-one.
Thank you. Jeff, you're talking first.
I can't.
Scott?
Sure.
Yeah, so thanks for hearing us out. We, um, been here a couple times the last few years, and I think we promised and hopefully come through with those promises that we, so we would do. And I think with building these buildings, we, uh, didn't wanna pay a lot for storage on wasted space, and, and people, uh, can come back and say they were right. And so we just utilized as much space as we could, and we originally planned in the church to have a storage area, and then we thought, well, what if we put offices in there instead? And so we ate up the storage. And it just got to the point where we have stuff in the hallways, um, stuff where we have to store off-campus. On a weekly basis, we have to go off-campus to, to get things and bring them back on. So there's a lot of stuff we use once or twice a year that just shouldn't be in the building, that it'd be nice to put somewhere else. And then on top of that, if you've come up Route three, um, coming from Westerville going to Sunbury, and you see our property, I think it looks nice, except for you have like this big box truck that's there. I route three, you have a couple like, um, storage like trailers. And if you keep going to the end of our property, you'll see four vans that are there, and not that they're ugly, but I think it doesn't do our property justice. Uh, in the summertime, when the lawns cut the right way and it looks like a beautiful golf course, it's nothing better than coming through. So what it allows us to do is kind of have a backyard or, or kind of a, a place where we can store the lawn mowers. store the lawn mowers, we can store some of these vehicles where they're not seen from the road. So, along with, not, I hate to say maintenance on vehicles, because we're not talking about fixing things, but we're talking about maybe cleaning them out, possibly, I mean, maybe changing oil on that, even though we send that stuff out, but just cleaning stuff, maybe changing a tire, and basic maintenance and storage within this building. I think putting it behind the school hides it as much as we possibly can. Putting some trees up kind of helps as well with that, but just a basic type of storage maintenance building, putting it behind, hiding it, and getting stuff out of our hallways and keeping everything on our property, rather than going off and storing stuff other places.
And the location of the building is to the south and west of the school building, so the school is a prominent thing, you don't see past it to that building. The only thing it might be, we tried to address by putting trees on the west side. Right now, I drove by, and with all the leaves down, you see the school and all of that. So, we're trying to mitigate that by putting extra planting over there. The building is also in a rather depressed area, like a couple of feet. So, where they build up for the soccer fields, kind of hides some of the height of it by it being backed down in that area. In order to put the building in, we are having to relocate the dumpsters slightly, so we're taking them from, they're perpendicular or parallel to the building, depending how you look at it, and they're pushing them out of the way and rotating them, so that they're off to the side. But we will go ahead, and we provided some landscaping there, as well as the corral that was there before, so we're maintaining that. The drive itself is twenty-five feet, I believe, to go back, so it's going to continue to go back to that, so. But we can go ahead and put the dimensions on there as requested by the staff.
I think it was verifying that the space between the parking spots, because you've got a twenty-five-foot wide way, but then you have, what, twenty-foot deep spots, and then a ten-foot, look like parallels.
It kind of goes down.
Yeah, the drive aisle offsets, so we maintain that twenty-five.
So, it's the space between the parallels and the perpendiculars.
Twenty-five feet, that's correct.
That does not look like twenty-five feet, if that's the scale on the drawing.
Uh, I just.
You've got three parallel, you've got three parallel spots at the top edge of that, and then you have six perpendicular spots underneath it, or seven.
I believe the minimum is that it needs to be twenty, and we will go ahead and make sure that that is documented on the drawings to say it's minimum twenty between the parking spaces themselves.
Okay. Any other responses to Joe's comments or tech review, or anything else that we need to?
As was stated, I agree with Joe that, you know, when we had the discussion, there were some discrepancies that I won't claim they're my fault, as far as the numbers that need to be put on there and corrected. I talked with Aaron, the civil engineer, and we agreed that the number of parking spaces will be the ones that were listed, the square footage of the buildings will be corrected to show that. And we, based on the amount of development that has been gone on with the property, we kind of look at this as a minor amendment, you know, not just because of, it's six thousand square feet, and I know that the previous person that came up had a six thousand square foot addition also, but compared to the relative scale and what we're trying to do, it's just a minor addition. I'm sure everybody here could agree with the fact that in your own house, what's the one thing you miss the most, is you never have enough storage. And the church has done an adequate job about trying to really work with the neighbors and not just like, well, hey, we're going to stick this out here in the middle of somewhere. We really want to do well with the community, putting it where it is, but also make it so that they can function, and you function better for the community.
Nope? All right, public comment? Let's go up to the mic, state your name, address, and you've got five minutes.
Hi, I am Lisa Hampel, six-eight-one-eight Via Florenta Drive. It's in the Marisol subdivision, which is across from the church, well, the academy, I guess you'd say. So, I don't oppose the building itself, right? I get, I agree, everybody wants more storage, I do too, but I have some issues environmentally and aesthetically, and that's what I'd like to discuss. So, I can't discern why there's a need for parking places. I didn't hear it tonight, I didn't see it in the plan, so I apologize, you guys are facing that way, and I'm back there, so if I missed that, then I apologize. But my concern, go ahead.
Was it about parking?
I don't understand the need for the ten parking places, and the real reason why, you know, environmentally, more pavement, right, issue, but you, oh my God, there's so much pavement over there already. But secondarily, it would require yet another street light. So, there's street lights, you know, the going down the drive, there's lights for the parking, of course. I understand all that, but do we need to add yet another one? You can see those lights from the community gardens, you can see the lights from Worthington Road, you can see the lights from the Worthington Road Park, which is that big field, you can see all the lights from Marisol, which is where I live. So, I guess I would ask for consideration as to whether or not those parking spaces are really needed, and is the subsequent light also really needed? I also couldn't discern, and apologies, I don't really know how to read the specs, but I couldn't discern if there was going to be lighting along the building, so I wanted to ensure that if there is going to be for security or whatever reason, that it wouldn't be on the west side. Again, more lighting, more light pollution that you would see from all the areas that I worked just before mentioned. Couldn't determine, again, so apologies, if any trees were going to be removed, so I, you know, there's the building, and then there's the drive and the parking spaces, but I couldn't discern if any of the trees on the south side were going to be removed, so I would request that that would not happen, because so many trees were removed when the drive was in place. There's, you know, you can see big gaps where like this gentleman spoke, and he said, yeah, you can see now that the leaves are down, you can really see everything, you really can. And it's not that it's that unattractive, but it is rather obtrusive. And then you state that you'll replace, put a few additional trees on the west side, which is very appreciated, but I guess I would ask that it be more than a few, that's what I, that's how it reads, it says a few. And then there's no indication of what the caliber would be, so I guess I would ask that it's more than a few, and that the caliber be substantial. The trees that were put in to replace the trees that were taken out for the drive were not substantial. And then I would have to speak to the color, which I know you're probably thinking I'm crazy, but you said red, okay? And I get that you think it's going to match the building, but I'm thinking, oh my God, fire engine red, like, is it going to be red-red? Because that's just like an eyesore, and I know you don't want it to be. So, I'm just here asking that you please take into consideration, you said the roof would be cream, you know, I don't know that red is really your best choice, maybe it's all cream, maybe there's some gray in there, because if it's red, then it needs to be like really, really muted, your building is muted, but when I hear red and I hear metal, whatever, sheeting, I'm thinking fire engine, and please don't make me cry. And I believe that is, that is it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, it's Robert Walker, and I live at six-eight-one-eight Via Florenta Drive, which is west of Worthington Road. And they've built the last six years, well, the school and the church and whatnot, which are beautiful buildings, and, but they've lost so many trees over there. There again, the trees they cut out were just huge, hundred-year oak trees, a lot of them, and they've planted some trees in there, but these small trees just don't screen much, you know, and I guess all I'm asking for is better screening, possibly, or more trees that would screen the folks that live in Marisol and maybe Sheffield a little better. Anyway, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, public comments closed. Comments?
Yeah, I mean, we've had the mentality that we're supposed to minister to our community, and the people we minister to first is the people around us, and so we want to find things that match up, and so just a couple of comments with the red, the fire engine red, absolutely not. I think the goal is to match up the current building, which we would say, although it looks pink when it's older, technically it is red, and so just staying true to our color, letting it kind of blend in with everything else. We did put parking back there so we can hide our vans, the vans that are out front, the trailers that are out front, the big bus that's out front, just to keep that off of Route Three, and visually put it in a place where we can keep it, keep it protected. We have had some, what is it, the, what gets stolen, the?
Catalytic converters.
Catalytic converters tend to get stolen, so we need to keep them under lights, and so that's, that's the type of stuff, but we want to be good neighbors to you guys, and we understand we can't reach the rest of the area without being kind to our neighbors, and so we want to work with stuff. I think we have, it looks like nine trees, or six trees and three shrubs. The goal is not to meet those, the goal is to prevent light from coming, so if you guys came and said, hey, this doesn't work, we want to, we want to meet needs, right? So, we want to find a way to block it and make it happen. So, that's just a couple thoughts that, as I heard, that we want to be good neighbors and what we can do.
Comments?
What about, and I guess I'll direct this to Joe first, and then to the applicant. What about putting fencing across the west side of this so that the neighbors can't see the vehicles being parked there?
Nothing on my end saying that they can't do it.
There is, we have the exact drop, is it like an eight-foot drop, or what is?
It's about six feet from where the building will be up to the edge, and then the crown of the soccer field's another three or four feet, so you get almost ten feet from where they are up to where it crowns and then starts kind of undulating, but that initial raise is about five, it ranges between four to five feet. So, if they were going to do it, that's.
Yeah, I don't know how much of the, the actual fence you'll see from, from there.
I would say if you.
Vehicles.
The benefit would be if you put it at the top of the hill.
So, in relation to the trees, where is the hill?
It starts immediately, so ten feet off of that, it starts climbing up, so.
Ten feet off that lot.
Off of the asphalt in the building, it starts climbing, so those, those trees are on the slope. One thing that I would suggest we do to help with her comment would be to smooth the evergreens directly behind the light to more shield it directly versus the deciduous trees, which will be more open. So, just not really changing, maybe some numbers get added, but shift the more screening trees right to the light.
And so, the red dot on there is the post light?
Yeah.
How tall is the post light?
How tall? It's twenty feet, matches the other ones.
Matches the other one.
And do you have, I realize it may not be under our purview, but do you have bollards around the fire hydrant?
I do.
Because I can see where this.
I don't believe that there are any proposed, and I don't believe there are any on the site like that.
I could just see driver coming to pick up dumpster.
Yeah, especially when snow's plowed and you can't see the fire hydrant.
I don't, I don't see that as being a, you know, detrimental thing, it's not, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, so.
That's, we can add those to the final engineering plan.
Yeah, speaking of the dumpster pickup, so they're coming up here, turning and then backing up this whole way to get up there, it's, the orientation is curious to me.
Is it, is it a back-loading truck, or is it a front-loading truck?
Front.
So, it's a front-loading truck, so it.
What we currently have is front-loading.
Okay.
The main drive that's further to the north, and they would pull straight in, and currently they pull in and back out.
Back.
Okay. I've got, yeah, thank you. So, I was thinking about all the asphalt as well, since it's been a topic of discussion today, and then some of the community comments about the asphalt as well. One of the things I was surprised to see is we have one garage door to allow maintenance vehicles to go in and out of the building. Can you explain that decision as opposed to two? You have room for two, one on either side of the ridge. Is it just a cost thing?
You're talking about access on the same side?
I'm talking about, yeah, the vehicles that would be accessing this way, you could have two here, which would allow you to pull multiple vehicles in, different garage doors at different times, you could store vehicles in overnight if you're worried about break-ins. Why one in the middle? It's just not something you normally see, you normally.
Yeah, we weren't planning on storing vehicles in there, this is more, we have a golf cart, starting the golf cart in there, lawn mowers, cleaning stuff that we use a couple of times a year. We won't be pulling the vehicles in there multiple at a time, even a storm overnight. It may be something, it's February or it's January, and it's five degrees outside, and the van needs to be cleaned, so we'd pull it in there, clean it, but it wouldn't necessarily spend the night. And I think we did big enough where we could pull the bus in there if we needed to service, like, clean it, or.
Yeah, it's very large, it's like fourteen feet or something.
Yeah, fourteen by fourteen. I think we actually, in the evolution of how we came up with where it's at and the orientation, we had thought about putting two there, two doors, but then that would make any kind of asphalt that we needed for the additional parking spaces to go beyond that.
Right.
Because you'd, you'd end up having to push it out, so you'd have more asphalt with that. We even looked at, well, what if we rotated the building to try and make that work? Then it ends up with a whole lot more cost, because you're now digging really deep into that hill because of rotating and things, so looking at all the different parameters, it seemed like this was the best fit.
Sure. Paul, could you pull up that site plan again that shows all the asphalt? So, that leads me to my question. So, often you'll see two, in case one breaks down, you can still get in and out of there with vehicles in and out, but I get it, we want to do one because of cost, but there sure is a lot of, you talked about the need to have all this extra asphalt if we had to. The other one, Paul, that you had a minute ago, or maybe it was just zoomed in on this? Yeah, this one's great. But here, you have the asphalt going to the edges of the buildings, you know, and we're really talking about fourteen feet down the middle is where we need asphalt, we have a lot of, you know what goes there, right? Pallets of things, stuff gets stored there.
Well, if we did that, we'd have to screen all that, because according to the ordinance, is any outside stores, and that's not what the church is wanting to do.
I agree, I totally agree with that, but my question is, why have asphalt here, why have asphalt here? Why not just have that drive? It's wide.
I see your comment.
I think on the top is the bus parking, right?
Right here?
I think it's farther to your right a little bit.
Well, those are, they're twenty-five.
All those are twenty-five.
Yeah. There's a large empty spot here, a large empty spot here.
It seems to me like this whole building could go that way a little bit, we could cut down on some of the asphalt, assuage some of the concerns of the community, you're reducing, you're saving money here, you're saving money on the sidewalk, not going the full length of that building.
I think part, part of it is the parking to keep four vans, two trailers, a bus, a plow truck, off the rest of the campus.
There will be parking here in that spot, is that what you're saying? It's okay if there is.
I'm trying to, I honestly should have brought glasses, but I, I think there's like eight, is there eight parking spots there?
There's seven.
There's ten total.
Ten? Yeah, so if you, you take four, four vans, we really have a box truck, a plow truck, two trailers, you know, we've eaten up eight right there, and, and the goal of this is, like I said, to, so the rest of the property isn't have these things all scattered all around it, and then also to kind of have that secure part right there, we put video camera coming off the front, you have a light that hopefully is not polluting any other area, but just right there where it makes it harder for people to take our catalytic converters.
Yeah, I guess I would like to see the drawings that indicate it, if you're planning on having a bus parking here, I'd like it to say bus parking, like, so that way we know where things are going and where they're not.
Okay.
And if they're not going to be a bus parked there, then let's not have it.
We can do that, we can add text to it to say what the, of the church's vehicles and stuff would be where. Also, to, to address one comment that was brought up before, at this point, we don't anticipate having any building-mounted lighting at all. This, this was mentioned, the security camera is going to be on the front where the light is at, but even at the doors, we're not looking to put any kind of additional lighting over the doors at this point.
Well, that was something I was going to bring up, being that you have one door in the way back, I think it's on the south side, located right about here, and then you have another door here, this one definitely needs a light. The light that, from that post right there will not be seen there, and you're giving, number one is a security issue.
Okay.
And a safety issue there, but.
That's okay, and it's, and it's on the opposite side from the Florenta.
But I think both main doors should have one of the LED downlights like the previous applicant had. They don't shed a lot of light outwards.
Right.
It's just down.
I think Mule. I think Mule has a light that works really well for that, that it actually points straight down as opposed to blending out.
Correct.
Which we could do that.
I mean, just, you, you walk up to the door and it's six o'clock in the winter, and you want to get in. You can't see because there's no light and you can't, you know, put your key in the door.
You've been to my house.
Been to my house.
I think mostly those are emergency for code. Uh, everyone should be coming in the front.
Crash door out, they're not, but.
But still, we're okay with the light.
Yeah, there's two things. It depends on the building permit, and what Delaware is going to tell you from a building code perspective, based on what the occupancy is. So there may be a requirement for a light, but then emergency lighting is a completely different thing. So if the power goes out, that light has to work where you have a separate emergency light.
It's about those Mule lights, they're actually a dual light. So it does both. It has a battery backup, so it can come on for an emergency as well.
That would be a good idea.
Then I have one suggestion. We were all talking about the screening and the planting on the west side of it. If I'm reading your topo map right, you've got the, all the trees going in at nine fifty-five. At the, almost at the bottom of the swale, the building's at nine fifty-two. If you were to move it up to the top of the swale at nine sixty, and you're putting in an eight foot tree or a ten foot tree, you're already screening most of the building from the western side of Worthington Road without having to put in any additional screening in. And it's just moving your trees probably about ten feet, it looks like.
To the west?
It would be to the west, correct. And it really doesn't take out a line with what you already have established there. Everything goes along the nine fifty-five.
Yeah.
So if you just kick it up to nine sixty.
Where's the soccer field stopped?
You see the walkway at the very top, right? So when you.
Got to grow the light.
Well, the lights aren't shining on the soccer field. They're actually be, be helping them from the west side. The, the light is going to be right next to the driveway, so.
That would be an easy change to go and move them over.
Yeah. Simple, easy, costly. And then you mentioned about storage. What are you storing in there? I mean, are there going to be combustibles? This is a pole building, correct?
Yeah, mostly chairs, uh, golf carts, lawnmowers, um, just.
No, no plow blade.
Snow.
Yeah, when we take that off. We store all that stuff right now up in storage units up in Sembury. And switch them out between seasons.
Uh, we have four hundred chairs sitting in our old lobby that the school just has to deal with, and there's stacks, six I padded chairs. Uh, so like a hundred, there's probably six hundred chairs, but there's a hundred and fifteen stacks, uh, just sitting there. So some of those things. A, a place where, you know, our, we laugh about our custodian, um, team is getting bigger and bigger just because of the space and how often the building's needed. So a place where they can get together, kind of, you know, figure out what it's going to look like for the day, who does what. And, you know, have some maintenance offices out of there if they have to have a meeting out there, just uh, creating more stuff, but nothing, nothing crazy in there.
Chemicals, uh, combustibles, like.
There'd be gas.
Will be gas.
Could be stored in there. Could be. If, so.
Unless you're telling us.
Throw the challenge flag at this point. I mean, do we have?
You're not, you're not, not talking about a storage building.
Yeah.
Well, then we're not storing gas in there.
Well, no, no, you're talking about an office and you're talking about a meeting space.
Well.
Janitorial, you're inputting an office out there, that's a completely different.
When I say a janitor's office, right now, they're meeting in a closet. So it's not like, not, don't picture this as, as nothing worth thinking. Um, I think we have fourteen or fifteen custodians or.
Well, with part-time and full-time, we're close to that.
Yeah, so a place where.
So I'll just tell you, if it's a storage building, it's a storage building. The minute you put a desk out there, you've got bathroom requirements, you have a whole bunch of other requirements. You have a whole bunch of other things. So I would caution you against doing anything about that. Cause that's a totally different ballgame. Okay?
They're going to stay in the closet.
No, Wally, Wally will stay in the main building, so he'll still have his office. So he'll have his computer, his stuff, but he'll get more room with all the stuff out there. I suppose the same, you, you, you just need to be careful that you don't change the use, that's, that was my.
I have a six thousand square foot pole bar building for storage is one thing. The minute you start doing other things, that's it.
I have a uh, follow-up question and then I would like to follow with a comment. The, um, you had a question about the door. Why is the door so far away? It's on the complete opposite side of the building. You have a huge concrete sidewalk that runs the full length of the building. What is being stored in the back of that building that needs that door back there?
I think that was, like, I thought we had to put something with your, if you're so far away from something, there had to be, I, I wasn't something where like, we gotta have this door. I think that was something we had to put in, but.
Well, you have a second means of egress and you can't use an overhead door as egress. So you're right, you have to have two doors.
So we do not have to have a second means of egress, uh, here. This is a storage building with an occupancy less than fifty. So you only need one means of egress for this. Two, the means of egress, if you did have to have two, I'm, I'm sure you know this. There's requirements for it, but it doesn't need to be on the far opposite sides of the buildings. If not, that door would be right there at that corner. Uh, so I would encourage you guys just to look at that. Concrete's expensive. And you're paving a long, 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 long sidewalk on the south of that building that now you're going to, you know, mitigate water for, to provide access to a door that nobody's going to want to use because it's all the way there inside the building. Unless there's a little private room back there that you're storing something special, you know, then that makes sense. So that was a question. Maybe, do you have a answer about that, or I would encourage you to look at it?
Uh, Mr., is it Teisman, Tysman?
Tysman? Um, I, I appreciate your comment. I think that, you know, that could be looked at. The, the one door that is shown at the far end could actually be brought all the way up.
Mitigating, you know, getting rid of a lot of that concrete just right up there. A lot of times it's nice to have the doors in, you know, farther apart because instead of having to go through the building to go back to get something you know is back on the backside, being able to go back to that door where they may have certain things, certain yard tools or whatever
Right.
might be back there. Instead of having to have everything up at the front and then having to go all the way back through.
Great.
But, but I'm, I'm think the church would be uh, okay with moving that up and just cutting out as much of that concrete as possible.
Save you ten thousand dollars.
As we say, the church agree to support.
Okay, no, I, I do agree with, that's why I was asking what's back there. If that is the lawn, you know, the, the yard maintenance area and one particular staff member's going to be using that door ten times a day and it voids the rest of the space, I, I get that, that makes sense then. My next comment addresses the red. Had the, the red in the room, the elephant in the room. It's fine. There's something in the zoning ordinance that says you can or cannot do a red barn building. Uh, I would, I would ask you to just have a five-minute conversation about this over lunch tomorrow. Uh, where your building is red, it's, it's brick, right? It's masonry. Uh, it, it's naturally red. And you have whites where you've got metals and you've got whites where you've got window frames and you've got. So I'm not so sure the red actually matches, uh, as someone who's done a red pole barn in Genoa Township, uh, so I, I get the, that sort of thing. Uh, but I don't think that's the aesthetic we're going for. We're not trying to build a farmstead here.
Correct.
A storage building, and the whole point of this building is to reseed away. And I do think white or off-white or whatever would fit well within the architectural char- characteristics of the campus and might even fit a little bit better just because of the nuances, pre-masonry metal. So I'd encourage you to look at that.
I think, you know, we may have gotten caught up in the fact that, you know, the, the image that was there was created by the builder. And it was like, okay, we're going to do something outside. The text I put in there complimentary, not bright red, fryer engine red. But I didn't know, we didn't have an actual palette to say, okay, this particular color, you know, like cherry blossom red or whatever to, to actually call it out. So the intent is to make it equal to or even less red than what the, the building is. And then we had to get a three D image of what this was, so the builder provided us that. So I, I apologize for the starkness of the, the image itself. But it was never intended to be a fire engine red or a bright red, you know, or a, a barn red, you know, anything like that.
I would encourage you not to make it red at all. Um, and then the last comment I had is about the images.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, you know, this is the image of the, the asphalt road that doesn't go the full width of the building. You know, if you can envision that with the asphalt going the full width of the building, we're getting a lot more asphalt than that's being represented here.
Okay.
So just, yeah, these are kind of concerns we have when we're doing these amendments. Just want to make sure we're being mindful.
Joe, more of a question for you, but we've been through a few development plan alterations, and the last one, we found that there were things that weren't done before we did the last one. And so where do we stand now on full completion of the last development plan and modification to the campus to where we are today?
I'm not aware of any concerns we have in that respect in terms of completion and build-out. Paul, I think you walked this one a while ago, didn't you?
Um, I did the compliance check for the sanctuary addition. I have not done the compliance check for the academy yet. We have that month and a half ago, so.
A little cold and snowy to really verify that the trees are alive, so.
So from your point of view, Scott and Jeff, anything lingering at this point?
The one thing you said, we were supposed to have seven hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces, and we have seven hundred and eighty-eight. So we're off by one because it didn't get added, but we can put that stripe. So like, as far as I know, clear conscience, that's the only thing that I know of.
Okay, so we've taken care of all the lighting issues, we've got all of our swale, we've got all of our landscaping taken care of. Nothing is outstanding that we promised. Okay?
There, there's, um, there's a, a tree in the dumpster that had died that had been removed, but we're shifting those around anyhow.
Any other comments or questions? Major, minor?
I'm still chewing on that.
Comparison to the whole scope of the bill, the plot.
I'm on.
It seems minor.
I agree.
I would go with minor as well.
I always don't like being the last person to agree on this. Definitely not on, on a, a project descale, because people do, do like to have an opinion on, on these larger projects.
So I'll throw it out. I think it's a major because it's a change in the character. I, I mean, this is a different type of structure than anything else on the, on the development.
Well, let's look at the. Significant change in usage or character of development?
Chip says maybe.
Maybe.
Okay, significant increase in overall coverage of structures?
No.
Six thousand compared to a hundred and eighty-six thousand?
No.
Increase in density?
No.
Negligible. Increase in problems of traffic circulation or public utilities?
No.
Significant reduction of improved open space?
No.
Small amount. Reduction of required off-street parking and loading space?
Nope.
Reduction of requirement pavement widths or reduction in the acreage in the planned development, and it's not that. So really, it's a question of whether or not it's the change in character of development.
Correct. It, there is a, like an accessory storage building sort of back behind the church, is there not? That smaller standalone building? It's a three thousand square foot. Yeah. Sort of back there between the, the sort of, I'll, I'll call it the original portion of the church. Yeah, that, that smaller building. So there is one on the side already.
Or, there's already a storage unit.
And that's what it's used for, correct? It's, that's just another storage sort of accessory structure.
In the beginning, when we had approached, uh, uh, Joe about this project, there was an understanding that nothing in the zoning code actually says it has to be a particular type of material, it's just the usage of the material. So that's why, because we were like, okay, if we want to put a building out here, metal siding, is that going to be an issue? Well, did, there wasn't anything in the zoning code that said it had to be a particular material. We just need to make the character look the same. That's what we were trying to do. So.
Are you getting to the color thing? Cause that's a completely different conversation, the major, minor versus the.
Well, you were saying about the, the difference between the building, it's a different character of the building versus anything else, and I thought that was.
The physically, physical adding of a building of the size to the property.
Talking about the properties of the building, so.
No.
Okay, okay. Just making sure.
Addition of a large building to the campus does it, is actually changing the use and the characteristics of the complex.
Okay, my, my fault, I misunderstood, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, our thought would be, we're still a church and school, this just helps us be a little more efficient.
I think it's a minor, in my opinion.
Okay.
That's not my hill to die on.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd move to declare the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application, Genoa Christian Academy Zoning Commission Case Number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, including all plans and materials, a minor amendment of the Final Development Plan per section twenty-seven ten point oh-three of the Genoa Township zoning resolution, thus not requiring subsequent action by the Board of Trustees. Uh, this motion is being made because it does not qualify for any of the characteristics A through H or qualifications A through H of section twenty-seven ten point oh-three of the zoning uh, resolution that would require a finding of a major amendment.
Motion's made?
I second.
Second? Discussion? Anything final anybody wants to say about it?
I just, I guess the discussion's more procedural. Uh, we've made a few comments about, hey, maybe moving the trees, and we can amend that very easily with your comment.
Well, that, we're just, this is just a vote on major or minor. I haven't gotten to that part yet. Yeah.
It's okay. Anything else on major, minor? Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Ben Eric.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Tysman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Left.
Yes.
And it's considered a minor.
So my question is for the chair. Do we, are, from your perspective, are we in a position to, I, I mean, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven potential uh, conditions, if you will. Uh, plus we've not even addressed the divergence for the Hoover watershed overlay. Um, I mean, I guess I pose this question to the rest of my commission members. Do we request that the applicant come back with all of these issues addressed and that way we're just voting on the divergence issue or with a clean amended plan or, I don't know.
The question to you is, are you, do you want to do a continuance, fix the stuff, bring it back so it's clean? Or do you actually want us to vote on that this evening and go through that?
I'd like to know how you'd vote before.
So let me, let me just address, so this is my list so far.
That's fine.
So the, the issues that I have written down is to update the first floor area square footage of the entire pro, not project, but the entire development. Update the parking space discrepancy. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Schaefer had mentioned, update the drawing as to the parking drive aisle width is inconsistent at one point. Um, there's also development texts, uh, page ninety-one about indicating that an accessory building is being proposed. Let's see. There's also discrepancy in the amount of the site acreage because you had mentioned that there were uh, easements or whatnot that had gone through since. Um, and then I have, there's an up, address that needs updated. We talked about, uh, planting more evergreen trees and moving those trees potentially in the elevation on that hill up to the soccer field. We talked about bollards around the fire hydrant. Um, and Mr. Tysman had also mentioned about specifying in the development text a parking plan so we know what is, what is not going to be vehicle-wise parked in that new parking area.
So I'll just give, I'll just give you my opinion right now. I'm, I'm in favor, but I think you need to come back once it's cleaned up. Cause that's a lot of stuff and I'd rather have a clean copy. That'd be my opinion. Anybody else want to?
But moving the doors.
The door, yeah, if you want to move the doors, just, I think there's enough there to get it cleaned up and make it right.
I agree. I mean, I think I could find my way to support it. I just think I'd much rather not be designing issues here on the fly and versus having a clean text to vote on.
Can, can I ask you a question? I think the first five or six, I think, have been addressed already about the square footage. You, we already agree on the square footage, it's just we had it wrong. We had the address wrong, the side, the address, like some, I feel like, of course I'm going to push to try to get this done. And I, I want to be mindful, you guys got other stuff going on tonight, but I feel like there is eight or nine things. The first six or seven have already been taken care of. So we're really looking, should we put in bollards? Moving the trees ten feet, like, I, I feel like these are all things we agree on, they're minor. Um, the parking plan, I mean, run out a minute or two and just, just hit this and be done with it.
Well, I, I'm.
May, I, I think the. May, I, I think the concern here is that it's all been verbalized, but the commission very much wants to be comfortable, see it on paper.
I got you.
So, I, I don't think anyone's arguing with that, there, there's been a lot of agreements come to, but, you know, the, the prior case had a small list, this is, we're now getting into eight, nine, close to a dozen items, and I think In my history of dealing with this commission, that's, you get a list that long, even if it's minor things, you know, minor things can add up to.
The other thing to consider is, we've made it a minor at this point, so there's really no further review. If we would have made it a major, and we'd make this a disposition for you to do it and submit it to the trustees, that's one thing, but since it ends here, I'd rather see something solid on paper, we cross all this stuff off, follow the list, we're done, it's clean, it's good.
Yeah, that's a good point, because if they vote on it with it being a minor, and it gets denied, it's, it's done. It just means it's done, so, if it had been a major, and they had voted on it and denied it, you'd still get a shot with the trustees, but their vote is now going to carry and be the definitive.
Oh, wait, yeah.
What was your comment other than that?
Are we asking for divergence? I, I hate to go through all this time and effort.
I think that was Mr. Schaefer's suggestion, is because of the Hoover watershed overlay, that, I don't remember the exact.
We're exceeding the.
Yes.
Yeah, the square footage right now already exceeds that number, but it's legally non-conforming, because it existed prior to that standard, but now they're asking to increase that. So if this was a straight district, we'd be sending them to the BZI for a variance, um, but obviously, this is a planned district, so the divergence process is what we have for it.
Yes.
Will the vote on any of that, hey, you're good to go, we're not going to worry about that while we clean this up, that all comes in one package?
Comes in one package, that's all at once.
Could I hear any feedback on?
I can give you some feedback on that, I think, maybe, because Joe had asked a question, which was, uh, The commission is able to decide if a divergence is granted, would we prefer a six thousand square foot, or add a buffer in there? If I were in favor of a divergence, it would be a proponent of a six thousand square foot, um, divergence.
I would support that.
I agree. I have to echo that, because I don't, I don't want to just give carte, no, in fact, I, I would not want to give carte blanche to.
Oh, yeah.
Say, build whatever in the future without.
Yep.
Because these, these things stay for the future.
Yeah.
If someone else buys your property.
Like, there's no opposition to the divergence, it's just, you're only comfortable with granting the additional six thousand square.
If we do the divergence, it would just be for the six thousand for the building.
Sounds great. All right, do whatever, we gotta close out.
Chair, I'd move to continue the public hearing for the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application, noting is known as Zoning Commission Case Number 2024-07. I apologize, I didn't get my dates.
The next meeting is February tenth, revised until June twenty-first, which is a Tuesday, because our office is closed for our meeting.
So, I would move to continue this case until February tenth at seven PM in the Genoa Township Hall, With additional, uh, revised materials due to the Genoa Township Development and Zoning Department by Tuesday, January twenty-first at four PM. Twenty twenty-five.
Have a motion? Anybody want a second?
I second.
Is that a discussion? Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Benner.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes.
That concludes us at eight fifty on this portion.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to step away to the restroom room.
Uh, we'll take a five-minute recess.
All right, uh, time is eight fifty-five, back in session, uh, called a hearing, zoning map, zoning text and map amendment.
Don't say anything at the very top, just do.
No, Mr. Fowler said at the last meeting, we didn't have to read all of that again, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler!
We shortened it up for you.
Good, all right, anybody willing to speak on tonight, I got to swear you in, you're still ready?
Case number, did you say that? That you're calling that?
It's not on here.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we should cite that, but you're calling the following here.
I am calling zoning case twenty twenty-four dash zero five, the zoning resolution amendment, second meeting, to order officially at eight fifty-six PM. Anybody who's speaking on this, this evening, please rise and be sworn in. Why do I have to swear you in for this, really? Would you like to?
I have a testimony.
All right, raise your hand, do you swear the tells the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, be seated, the following remarks is exhibit A through G, A, legal notice, B, affidavit of advertisement, C, sign-in sheet, zoning text amendment, Uh, dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-four is, is D, E is the DCRPC, recommendation made on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, F, all public comments received between November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and G is the staff presentation from the previous meeting. Mr. Schaefer, any comments?
Uh, just, I forward you all the recommendation of the Regional Planning Commission, uh, that's on the nineteenth, that's exhibit E, it was a favorable, uh, recommendation Um, for you, so you should have all that documentation, um, in your, uh, email boxes, if you don't, let me know. But I don't have anything else to present, I did the big presentation at the last meeting, so I think, if I recall correctly, the goal of the commission now was to start going through Shunks of the articles at a time, and revisiting some topics that had come up at prior meetings, um, and whatnot, so It's really more your hearing than my hearing at this point, so I'm going to turn it back over to you, and just to answer questions when they come my way.
Okay, uh, first thing up, we'll do public comment.
Uh, Rick Wieland, ninety-five hundred Britton Woods Drive, Galena. So I've got a packet there that I presented to you guys this evening, and I sent to you guys before, I believe. And I didn't receive any kind of comment or feedback on anything yet, and I'd like to talk about some stuff, I don't know if you guys want to, can I have a workshop sometime to go over some of this stuff? Or we have to do it here at a meeting or whatever sometimes, but, I brought this information up to you guys back in April, and haven't heard anything from it since. So, here it is again, I presented some of this stuff to the trustees, I was up at the planning commission meeting or whatever, presented some stuff to those folks up in there, Went over what they had for those proposals and stuff to you guys, they missed a lot of stuff for us, at the planning commission stuff. I don't know if they're glancing over a lot of our stuff, there's a lot of other stuff that I brought up to them. Some of the, some of them was this, uh, building height definition stuff that we ask about and stuff, they didn't address any of that in our zoning changes, which was a big change from what we've had in the past. So I need to find out why we're changing this definition of building height, other jurisdictions don't do it. I've been checking on other townships around all kinds of places, everybody goes with a standard, pretty much like that drawing has on there, from a grade point out in front of the house to the top of the house, that's your building height. We don't have a lot of mansard roofs being built nowadays, and different things on structures, we deal with gable roofs probably a hundred percent of the time. So for Joe to put something in our document regarding a mean height creates more problems than it solves. That's why I've got you definitions and stuff on there, and examples of what happens when you have a mean height on a building compared to just the overall height. It can be manipulated by the builder, and that's what that drawing shows. I can build you a house that's forty-four feet tall with a thirty, under a thirty-five foot mean height, which is a huge structure in a rural residential area. So we got to get back to back what we're talking about here as far as heights and stuff, even thirty-five feet is a tall house, you know, in a rural residential area. So we've got tons of room in our zoning code as it is, we don't need to put any more in there. And a lot of our stuff in there doesn't address the difference between accessory structures and the principal structures. In Joe's text on the new stuff, and you guys have it in the text in front of you, Under section, what is it here? Sixteen oh nine oh one, He goes on to say maximum building height shall be, shall not exceed twenty-two feet on a lot under two acres in size. Then he goes on to say, on parcels three acres or larger, you can have a maximum building height not to exceed thirty-five feet. That's a big difference, but he missed out on telling you what's going to happen on acres between two and three in that definition. That needs to be corrected in our text, that's why I presented you a graph that Franklin County uses, it's based on lot sizes. And that's a graph that they've had for years, other areas use that too, Jefferson Township, a few other ones, Plain Township. So it's something I'd like you guys to consider. It, uh, takes into consideration more the height of the building for the lot that you have, not just trying to cover But, uh, uh, you know, three to five acres with one, one height for all those areas. This breaks it down more into individual lot sizes, which proportionally wise, works out very nice. And it's something that it'd be nice to discuss and talk about, and even show examples of, to you guys to understand it. But we have to have a little bit more definitions in there as far as stuff, because it's not feasible for somebody to go build a thirty-foot, thirty-five-foot house On a three-quarter or acre and a quarter property. We even have some properties right now zoning-wise, and I have to find out why this is happening, that are one point three nine acres In a rural residential area, in the Hoover reservoir, that are getting new homes built on them, that are pushing the thirty-five-foot height, That are puts, pushing all of the impervious surfaces because of that size, adding swimming pools that are encroaching, that are within, you know, I think there's a hundred-foot setback in the Hoover reservoir stuff from Columbus City Water, or Columbus property, and these swimming pools are thirty-three feet away from them. And this is the stuff that's getting passed through our zoning department. So we have to have some stricter regulations, and we need to revise this stuff, so we have a, just a concrete base to work off of, So that everything works out nice for everybody's stuff. So once again, I'd like to consider what I had in that packet and stuff there, if there was a time when we can get together, go over it, I'd love to be able to do that stuff. I think those changes need to be implemented in our stuff here, and, uh, especially when we're talking about changing definitions for building heights and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, uh, I know the members of the public, so the public comment is closed, all right. Who want to start?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did have some items responsive to some of the things that were mentioned, you want me to mention them now, or would you like the commission to?
Uh, you can talk to them now.
So regarding the definitions of height, I did do some research of my own, and I'm trying to find my piles here, sorry, too much. I located approximately a dozen or so townships in Ohio at least that do, now, they don't use our exact definition, I'm not saying they match our exact definition, But do in certain situations use a mean height measurement, so actually, I'll just read them off, and then I'll provide them to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to look at them. What this is telling me is perhaps we could simplify our building height definition for residential to maybe match this, because they are more concise than what we have drafted. But if you look at, um, Berkshire Township Delaware County, Brown Township Delaware County, Delaware Township Delaware County, Trenton Township Delaware County, Troy Township Delaware County, All use some sort of mean measurement. I also found, in just some quick searches of townships I'm aware of, that I looked at, as well as just Google searches, Anderson Township, which is down in Cincinnati, Jerome Township, obviously out towards Dublin, Franklin County Township zoning, or Franklin County zoning for townships, Um, this is Colrain Township in Cincinnati, Washington Township in Montgomery County, Miami Township, and I'm not familiar with that county that that's in, Bridgefield Township, which is, I imagine, up towards Bridgefield, and Springfield Township in Clark County, all have, and they're almost verbatim the same definition. Um, they basically say, um, the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the proposed finished grade at the front of the building to the highest point of The roof for flat roofs, to the deck line of mansard roofs, and to the mean height between eaves and ridge for gable hip and gambrel roofs, so It, it's sort of mirroring the sort of theory that we're taking, like I said, but it is more concise, I did expand ours to try to accommodate for additional roof types, And I'm always worried that someone's going to come up with a roof type that we don't have on the list, and how are we going to treat it, so, um, but, but I, I would not say that the standard is just from The average elevation to the highest point of the building in every community. Are, does that, is that prevalent? Yes, there are plenty of communities that do it that way, but my research is showing there's a lot of other communities that do it a different way, So I think it's just ultimately up to Genoa Township to decide what's best for Genoa Township.
And mean was the mean, the way we did it. And mean was the mean, the way we did it prior to the one last.
Yes, and that, and that, and I think we've had that conversation, so I'm not sure I can say, I feel like I've answered that question numerous occasions of why we're changing it and what we're doing, we're going back to basically, for residential, essentially what it was with some tweaks addressing some additional roof types. Um, which served this community well for many, many years. Um, regarding section sixteen oh nine oh one dot D, um, the current code actually says if you're below that three-acre threshold, that's where you're at the twenty-two feet, and then above that, you can go up to thirty-five feet. I just proposed to reduce that to two acres, and there really isn't, I'm not sure where the gap lies, because in my draft in sixteen oh nine oh one D, sorry, I'll close the book here real quick. The draft says the maximum building height shall not exceed twenty-two feet on a lot under two acres in size, on lots two acres or larger, the maximum building height shall not exceed thirty-five feet. So there's not a gap between two acres and three acres, we, we drew the line at two acres. The reason I'm just reducing it to two acres is, I don't know where three acres came from, two acres is our minimum lot size requirement for rural residential. So I, I, I just moved it to two acres to be consistent, if we wanna keep it at three, we can keep it at three, I just never knew where that number came from, so I was just trying to. And we did that with swimming pools and accessory buildings a while back, like we had those at two different numbers, and it was really confusing to explain to people. And some people even will ask this, will say, well, why is three acres the magic number? And I'll say, I don't know, it's just always what it's been since I've been here. So um, that, that's really all we're trying to do there. If there is a, a specific discrepancy between two and three, um, perhaps I missed it, but it's, at least in sixteen oh nine oh one dot D, there's not a discrepancy between two and three acres.
Joe, that three-acre number might be a, a throw over from the water planning. Because there's the differential between two and a half acres and five acres, and what they will look at, so maybe it's just been rounded up to three.
That's interesting, yeah, that's quite possible, cuz that's not some guy, something I would, you know, get involved with, so, outside my area of expertise, so. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't always document the why of why they did some of these numbers, so it is a little bit of a guessing game, especially when they've been around for so long. And then regarding the Hoover reservoir overlay pools and setbacks, the Hoover reservoir overlay does not apply to swimming pools built on a private rural residential lot. If you look the rural residential regulation, or the Hoover watershed overlay regulations, which, you know, I'm not trying to brag, but I did draft those regulations, so I'm pretty familiar with what it says and doesn't say in that code section. Section seven oh two is reserved, because that would have been the section that applied to straight districts, but we didn't want to apply it to the straight districts, so that's why that section is empty and says reserved. If you look at section seven oh three with all those big setbacks and a hundred-foot off of Hoover watershed body and all that, or the Hoover reservoir body, you'll see section seven oh three says design standards for plan developments. And it says, they applies to planned zoning districts existing or proposed within the Hoover watershed overlay district, as well as all existing or proposed plan developments within the H O D. Requirements and restrictions of the base district existing or proposed shall apply for any standard not expressly regulated, supplemented, or altered herein. Should a conflict between regulations exists, the stricter requirements shall apply pursuant to section seven oh one oh three and seven one oh four of the article. Um, obviously, uh, this was, this was basically designed to say any new plan developments that come in after the Hoover watershed overlay got approved would be subject to those standards. But any of the existing plan developments are operating under the terms of your existing plan development approvals. And again, none of the straight zoning districts are rural residential, so if you're putting a pool on a rural residential lot, you do not have to worry about the Hoover reservoir watershed. If you recall, for those of you who are here, we got a lot of concern from people who were saying, oh, they're gonna start dictating about, you know, what trees I can and can't have on my property, and if some of you who've been here long enough remember that a while back, years ago, people got letters from Columbus about disturbing some of the areas against the watershed. We very purposely did not want to bother the people in those straight districts about their accessory buildings and their pools and not apply the watershed to them. So just wanna be very clear on those points, that that's how those sections are administered. I don't believe we're doing that incorrectly. There's a specific example that someone wants me to look into, be happy to look into it. Give me a permit number and address, you know, I'll investigate to see if there was any issues, but um, again, if it's a straight district, it wouldn't um, apply to the, or wouldn't have to adhere to those H O D regulations. So just wanted to touch on those couple things before you had your discussion.
Thank you. Anybody wanna start off on that?
I mean, are we gonna talk about heights, since it's not, it's not really in our, in our chapter list here for tonight? I mean.
Well, I mean, it is, it's under the definition.
Well, it's under the definition, but like, not the, I mean, we can change the definition, sure, but otherwise, we're gonna expand so much again tonight.
I, I'm willing to start there, if you want to.
I mean, otherwise, it was skorking through.
I mean, to, to me, to me, when I, when, when we were talking about it last time, I thought maybe the height definition, like the whole, not the definition itself, but the whole calculation might be too complex, and I, I can, I can understand Mister Whelan's point. It would be good, I mean, would it be okay for you to work out something easier, cuz I think, is it, would it be in the next times chapters, like, like, like in?
For the building height definition?
Version of it, and like, what if someone has a walkout basement on one side of his house, what would be the calculation for that?
Usually, look at the front of the house when we're.
Yeah, I know, but that, that's always, that, that's, that's the thing that is problematic in my prom, in, in, um, on, on my end, because it's like, you, you have four sides in generally of, of a house, so you can just pick the sides that, that best suits you then, and that's, that's a little bit.
Still at the front of the house, if you can't.
But sometimes, sometimes if you live in a rural residential area, what is the front of your house, like, I don't know what the front of my house is, I mean, I mean, there is a front door, but we always, there is another front door on the other side, I mean, it's kind of ambiguous what the front is. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, so, some houses you could, you could argue has, has, could be, two sides could be the front of the house, that's just my, my point.
Generally, the front's gonna follow what the code says, the front, the house, the section that faces the front lot line, and what the front lot line is defined by the.
My, my point is, it just, it just leaves rooms for quite a bit of loopholes, like, maybe you have a walkout basement with another story, it's so deep that it, that it's, that it's, at, at the backside, double, you have a double-high walkout.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, like, it could potentially be the case, I mean, that, that is a possibility, if it's deep enough. You're really on a, on a, on a nice hill where you put in a concrete pad with a pool, I mean, I'm not, I mean, there, there is places where you could do this here.
Oh, that exists all over the place.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, but then you end up with a really tall height on one side of the, of, of.
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, like, you just, you just create structures that are gonna be way over thirty-five feet.
But they wouldn't be over thirty-five feet from one part of the ground?
No, I, I agree, but people in the community could argue, hey, look at this guy, cuz they will, probably don't see the front of his house, and they say, hey, this is like fifty feet over there. I'm just saying, like, you, you, you create, you create something for the public to, that, that's. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of a good example, but there's, there's a few hills around the, around the Hoover water, um, around Hoover, Hoover reservoir that are really steep, that you could dig in a house in the hill and end up with a, with a really massive, tall structure on one side. I know, my, that, my point is just like, maybe it could be something else, another, a different way to calculate it, so you don't have that, except if you're fine with that, but.
I, I don't think a, a, a builder or a, a person building a house or constructing a house should be penalized because they have a walkout basement.
Oh, no, I, I agree, but.
And so I, I think I think you have to look at the front of the house. A, and I've been chewing on this definition, and I, I keep rereading it, rereading it. I think it's too complicated.
I agree.
A, and, and so where I'm at is, I, I agree with taking the average of the front of the house. And I understand there may be some dispute as to what is the front of the house, but, I mean, it'd be, prime example, your house may be over the thirty-five foot if you consider the back of the house.
No, I agree, I, I, I agree, I'm just, that's why I take this as an example, cuz I don't.
From my perspective, I don't think we look at the aesthetics necessarily of the back or the sides of a structure. I mean, whether it's an address and where the house fronts you look at, where the house fronts to get the street at it. Anyway, my point is, I'm okay with the average of the front of the house. My question is, should it be versus the tallest point of the structure? Or as you have defined it, as some roof structure? A, and I know, I think you mentioned, what happens if somebody builds a turret? Or a, a steeple-type portion to their roof, and then that throws, it's not occupiable. It's small in relation to the rest of the structure, but yet it would throw off the height considerably. And so to me, that's the fundamental question, is, is it the top of the structure regardless of what portion of the house it is? Or is it the top of the roof structure? I don't know. That's what I'm grappling with right now.
I'm of the opinion, it's the original line. The original line is the original line, it's the original line. If you put a cupola on top of it, that's a cupola. But by going to what we had previously in the past with mean averages, as we all know, statistics and numbers can be played with, and I'm not sure some of the homes that we have now, you know, part of me being here, if they got divergences or not. Because I, I drive up and down Sunbury Road, and I see homes that are fairly tall, or accessory structures that are fairly tall. And they're not on large lots, per se, so. Where do we, what is a common sense approach to this? Doing math to figure out the height, roof height, or is looking at the, what the builder has submitted? And then holding the builder accountable for what he's submitted?
There are lots of jurisdictions that use the mean height between the eve and the ridge. Joe's shown it, there are lots of jurisdictions that use the absolute height as well. I think I need to do more research into this before I'm comfortable putting any kind of vote uh together on that at all. I'd like to go through all the examples you brought and see what actual number they're using as well. Are they all using thirty-five, or some using forty, or some using thirty?
So I just printed the definitions, just so you know, I didn't look at the numbers. I do recall seeing thirty-five a lot, but there were some that were taller than that.
Right. So I guess, was that based off lot size, though?
Some of them, a lot of them were based more on the district, like in the commercial district, some of them, in the more urban townships, a lot of people will go higher in certain districts. I mean, you think of like Home Depot here, I mean, Home Depot's not thirty, I doubt Home Depot's thirty-five feet tall, it, it, to the highest point of that building, same with Kroger, so.
But there, but there's, there's, there's something to that, and, and I don't, I don't disagree with the approach you're doing, I, I think I just wanna understand it more, find out the best, the best thing to do it. And your point is, you just named probably the biggest building in Genoa Township, maybe, and maybe it's the, the building we just talked about. And we're saying that's not even thirty-five feet, and yet we're allowing potentially.
Well, I would think it would be taller than thirty-five feet, Home Depot, to the top of that, the front.
Well, the frontage absolutely is taller than thirty-five feet.
To the top of the peak of the.
The building itself is not.
Yes, yeah, the, the main building, right, yeah, correct, yeah, correct.
So, yes. So I wanna, I wanna just do a little more dig into this.
Sure.
I think the question I have, and this comes because I'm a, I'm a newcomer to the group, is what are we, what is, what is the goal of this regulation?
To me, the goal is to get in building heights where I feel like are more in line with basically what we're seeing asked for commonly in the community. And if that's what is commonly being built in the community, and like the B Z A, if the B Z A granted a diver, or a variance for, I think, forty-plus feet, now granted, there were each variance case is different, unique, so you can't necessarily say it's a precedent. But I don't wanna create a standard where now we're just gonna have the big, punt, and now the B Z A's gotta deal with all these height variance requests. Because we've established an unreal, I don't wanna establish unrealistic standards that people are just constantly gonna go to the B Z A and say, you're Genoa Township, you build million-dollar homes here, million-dollar homes are big and tall.
So the main request for people requesting divergences or variances in this particular case is, cuz they have a really big house, and the pitch of the roof is going to require.
Yeah, and a lot of them are because they're doing, you know, this. You know, the bulk of the house is fine, it's, it's because they're doing this.
And it's cuz it's so big, by the time you get.
By the time these, these roof angles and stuff, they, they are just getting to the point where there's, in modern home taste and styles right now, you know, that's just where, that's what the people are building, and, you know, we're here to represent the people in, in the community, and by and large, you know, I'm not getting complaints about this topic other than just how the current height is working and structured, so like I said, we, we've gotten, you know, we pointed out that some unhappiness with the current way it's working, so to me, we need to adjust it and fix it. Now, like I said, I'm just trying to go back to what we did prior. I think we could simplify the definition to Mister Welch's point, I actually like what I think I'm seeing in some of these other codes where it's maybe three or four sentences, maybe we add a, a, a tag on for all other roof types, so it should be measured like this, just as sort of a fail-safe. But um, you know, I, I'm all for simplifying it, I don't wanna do anything too complicated, and I, I think you're right, I think what we have is probably a little too complicated for residential, I'm fine with the non-res, cuz we're basically keeping that as is.
So one, my question when I ask, what are we trying to do here? One answer is, let's make the zoning ordinance a little more amenable to what's actually being built, so, you know, makes sense. On the other hand, we're trying to maintain somewhat the characteristics of Genoa Township. And, and so that's, that's the flip side, and that's why I think this is a challenging issue, um, because both are valid. Would it be possible, since you mentioned that these issues have been brought to the B Z A in the past, cuz I, I mean.
Well, they would be if.
Well, I guess that's my.
They've had a few already.
They've had a few.
Yeah.
Could, could you, I'm sorry to create more work, but could you give us perspective over the last five years, for example, how many times an applicant has come to the B Z A asking for a, a divergence regarding building height, both primary residence versus accessory structure? Just so that, and, and kind of what that amount of footage was.
Yeah, that wouldn't be hard at all, we keep a log of all that stuff, so that'd be pretty easy to extract that information.
That would give me some perspective as to, as you say, we're trying to represent or build a zoning code that, resolution that follows what the public's doing, well, what is the public doing?
Well, I, I think what we're also trying to solve is there's a lot of grayness in how the definition currently works with the building height exception, so I'm trying to eliminate that, that gray that tends to be up for, eventually someone's gotta interpret that or make sort of a judgment call on it. I prefer not to be in that situation and just have it be very black and white, so I, I think there's a little too much subjectivity in the current code language, and that's, so that's probably the better answer, is I'm really trying to eliminate the subjectivity that was sort of brought to our attention from some of the complaints we had received about some existing buildings.
Hey, Joe, real quick question, you did a lot of research pulling methods for different groups across the state. The contiguous townships around us, do you have that?
When I was looking for those ones that are in that stack, I checked everyone in Delaware County, and then I just searched some other towns, well-known townships that I knew of, plus I just sort of did a Google search, so there was, I think, five or six in Delaware County. I'm trying to think, Berkshire was, I think, the most, was the one that was most contiguous to us. Trenton, I think, was in my list there, I'd have to refer back to that stack. Orange and Harlem, I don't think, um, were.
Liberty does not have a height.
Well, they have, they have height restrictions and height definitions, but I'm saying, I just pulled the ones that matched the mean thing, so I'm just trying to make the point that, yes, there are a lot of people who do it the way we currently do it, but there are many communities that don't, so it's sort of like, we could go back and forth and straw pull all, every township in Ohio that has zoning to figure out who does it more, but at, at some point, it's just more of what do we think is right for Genoa Township, so.
Where I was going with is, don't reinvent the wheel so much, it's just make sure we're consistent with our neighbors.
Yeah, it's just the neighbors don't all match.
All right, Joe, we're gonna go back and look at B Z A, see where we are.
Yeah, I'll get you that list, yep, that's a good idea.
Go from there.
Yeah, I'll review some of this and look at others as well.
So, Joe, what do you think is so confusing about this, or it's complex?
Well, especially in the height modification section. It, it talks about spires, but we don't define what any of those architectural terms are, so I have to defer to the definition and just the regular dictionary, which is very specific, so a spire in the dictionary is any roof. So a spire in the dictionary is any roof that does this.
So trying to make it easier.
I'm trying to make a document that's easier for me to enforce, to be honest. And I don't think what's there right now is easy to enforce and it seems to be causing heartburn, so I'm just trying to fix that.
All right.
Are we going to the codes from chapter one?
Do you want to talk more about building height?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it now?
Well, we're, we'll talk about it next time when it comes. Yeah. We'd talk a lot more.
Okay. All right, who's got the first thing?
I have page one.
I have a question.
I have a question on page one as well.
Oh, you're in the chair.
No, you get to go first.
Do we have to have agritourism?
Yep. He didn't stomp on my foot, so I guess I answered that correctly.
Okay. Agritourism, that's by Ohio code, I think it needs to be in there. In the middle of the section on one oh two oh one, I know we've had it in there for a while, but we call building materials in. It's like the excluding exterior.
Yes, that's revised code statute.
That's excluding exterior.
Yeah, in fact, Tony and I had a conversation about that specific topic today.
So based on revised code, we have to have that wording in.
Yeah, I think this wording, I'll hand it over to.
Well, with five nineteen oh two one A, and it's one of the, I think, worst draft statutes currently. Because it's been amended a lot since two thousand and four. It says except as otherwise provided here and in the interest of, which is the purpose, what it is that the township trustees can zone. It does that three different times. The second one, and it first was added to the zoning resolution in two thousand and four. It was House Bill one forty-eight and it put in establishing reasonable residential landscaping standards. And residential architectural standards with language that says excluding exterior building materials. A year or so later, the legislature amended it at Senate Bill eighteen. And what that effectively did was it took out public health and safety as purposes for which a township could adopt those regulations. It opened it up also to non-residential zones. There were two courts of appeals cases that for something, it's referred to as the one subject rule in the Ohio constitution. Those two courts of appeals cases said it violated those, but the fifth district of which Delaware County is a part. In the Ohio Supreme Court, I'm not aware of either of those ruling the same way addressing that issue. So until that happens, I think we're all considering it to be what the law happens to be. But the, in response to your question, a township now can adopt or establish. Reasonable architectural standards excluding exterior building materials. That's always been in there since it was first in in two thousand and four. But since Senate Bill eighteen, it took it from only residential and your zoning resolution has, I would call it a typo now, it needs to be updated. It references residential. That change occurred, I haven't had a chance to look at it to see prior versions of the zoning resolution. My guess is it just never got changed over the years. But it references, if I recall correctly when I saw it, what ORC section five nineteen oh two A authorizes. So it's more of a Scrivener's issue, I think, than a substantive issue.
Okay.
But it does exclude residential, or it does exclude exterior building materials.
So we're saying perhaps one oh two oh one here recites an older version of five nineteen that needs to be updated?
It might be, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a note to double check that and make sure we're matching that standard. That part, that segued into a conversation of, we have certain sections in the code and like the conditional use standards where we're talking about building materials.
Yeah.
We might have to modify some of that language or take it out if it speaks specifically to a building material.
That's why I'm asking the question. Basically blowing that out of the water of what we have.
Well, I don't think we reference building materials too, too often.
No, but we also have conversations about those in.
We just did tonight.
PRDs and what the building materials are.
But we didn't, but we didn't, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, I'll let you continue.
You're not, you're not interrupting.
I watched it, I didn't interrupt.
It was a perfect segue for you to interject.
What I tried to do with that, and I'd love to hear legal counsel's, I don't know, comment on this. I tried not to say, I'm going to reject this or you can't do that or this, instead of recommend you look at alternative colors that are more. We're allowed to do that, right?
Yeah. Yes. I mean, the color was a question, but. So if you're adopting architectural standards, how does that not include exterior materials of what something's being made of?
We'll have to try to be a little more creative in how we word it. So we're not specifically speaking to building, I think the, the term is excluding exterior building materials. There's other things relative to architecture that aren't necessarily exterior building materials, I would think. You can sometimes talk about a little more.
Design would be what we can to build of like mind or build of.
Yeah, we'll probably have to soften it, it'll be, it'll admittedly be a little more subjective, but if we're wanting to touch on that issue. I guess it's at least not, otherwise you have to have nothing. So we can take a look at those standards that we feel like we might need to revise to.
We're going to make it to page two, we're already thirty minutes.
I know, all right.
We have to allow.
Solar and wind farms.
Do we have to allow them?
Why are you jumping sections?
I'm sorry, I apologize, I withdraw my question.
Thank you. Let's go in order.
He likes you, he allowed you to interrupt, but not me.
I know, right? He had a question pertaining to the main question on floor. All right, who's got the next thing?
I got one on page one eight.
One eight. Oh, sorry.
But no, you told me to shut up.
Page two.
Okay.
Page two first.
That's the solar and wind farm question?
Yes. I thought we were way off then, I'm sorry.
One oh two, one five, AMB.
We cite five nineteen two thirteen, I'm not, I don't know that code section off the top of my head.
To respond to your question, I can send something to you that addresses what it is a township can regulate with respect to solar farms. And wind farms, there's distinctions between how big they are in terms of. I can't tell you right now off the top of my head if, I think it's like five megahertz or something along the. Mega watt, yeah, mega watt.
Five megawatts.
If it's above it, below it, I can't wax poetic tonight in terms of all of the things that can be regulated, but I can send something to you if that works.
Sorry. Stuff regarding solar that's in here, we got a sample, um, repeat. Stuff from Peter Greg's office that actually got sent out through the Ohio Township Association. I had to modify it just to, you know, formatting wise to make it fit our document. But, and then the wind farm stuff, I think, got put in before my time, but I think it's a similar thing. It's, they're both sort of like ag where you can regulate it in certain circumstances in a certain way as prescribed by the state. And telecommunications towers are the same thing, they all sort of function the same way. Where in certain instances, we have no control. In the limited instances where they do allow us to control it, sometimes they'll even tell you, well, this is specifically what about it you can control, control and not control.
Cause I don't want to open a door we don't have to open.
No, I, I don't think we're opening any doors to stuff that the state law is not already saying is open.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had up until later on, thank you.
Anything before eight?
One eight.
Sebastian?
Um, one fifteen oh one E. My question is, um, does it need to be fifty percent? Could we make it less than fifty percent? So it's basically if, um, if, if you replace part of a building. Under fifty percent of, of the gross footage of that building or structure. You don't have to basically get a permit, right? Get zoning permit. I mean, I feel, I feel like fifty percent is, is a large part of a building to replace. To not require a permit, that's my personal opinion. And also the replacement, what does that mean? Does it need to be replaced in exactly the same way?
All E is saying in the first sentence is if you're replacing less than fifty percent of the building, we're considering that an alter, for the purposes of permitting. Considering that a building alteration and not a brand new build.
It's not saying you don't have to have a permit, it's just the type of permit, right?
Yeah.
So you need an alteration permit?
Yeah, there's a difference in our office between a permit for a building alteration and a new build.
Okay, so if, if, if I cut my house in half, I, I build a whole new section on that same. I mean, could I just change the layout totally also, or is that needs to be built in exactly the same way? Like not exactly the same way, but in, in the same in essence of, of what was there.
You're modifying less than fifty percent of your house, it would just be considered an alteration as long as you comply with all applicable zoning setback standards. It, it's really just a matter of how the permitting is getting done. What, what permit are you getting for my office? It's not saying you don't need a permit, it's just saying, I'm going to charge you fifty dollars for a building alteration permit as opposed to three hundred or a hundred and fifty or three hundred, whatever the current fee is for a new build. Depending on whether we're talking residential or non-residential.
Okay. My question was just, should it be fifty?
I mean, for. But if you guys want to keep it that way.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I mean, you're still required to get a building permit, it's just a matter of what permit, so.
You mean a zoning?
Huh?
A zoning permit?
Yeah.
If you're going to just alter, if you're going to do less than fifty percent, you just need an alteration permit, like you said, from a cost perspective, I think that's. I don't know that I want to go down just from a community perspective, like.
I don't know, I mean.
Why, why charge them more for something that's less than fifty percent, so. Most somebody feels partially different.
No, sure.
It doesn't change anything in terms of the review standard, correct?
No, you still got to comply with the zoning code. You know, honestly, we'd honor any legal non-conformances, but.
All right. Who's got the next one?
I went, I'm going to two next to.
Anyone else on one? Yep, going to two.
Uh, I got two oh one oh seven.
Two oh one oh seven.
The first sentence just seems very weird, I think there maybe needs like a point comma at behind ORC. Zoning commissions shall have and may exercise all power and authority.
Oh yeah, there's a missing word, it should be as may, as may be amended. Yeah, comma as may be amended or supplemented, you're correct.
It does seem weird.
Yep. I'll check the BZA language too, because sometimes in, in the zoning commission of BZA sections, a lot of the same language appears, so.
Anything else for two?
Nope.
Three.
Had, by chance, has this been floated past the BZA? Do they have anything they want to see added, changed, or?
I did make them aware you were working on this. I can't remember off the top of my head what my last correspondence with, with them was, whether or not, um, I sent them the draft. I mean, if they're subscribing to the township news stuff, then they would have gotten the stuff that all the general public gets. I will see them on the twenty-eighth, I'll let them know. They are aware that something's in the works because they have a case that's sort of been referencing a certain portion of this document. Uh, I can't get into specifics since it's their case, but I, they're generally aware you're working on something.
I, I mean, obviously they're, at least for our purposes, they're a member of the public that they could come and comment, but I'm, I guess my, the point of my question is. I'm not a BZA member and I don't deal with the mechanics of their hearings and processes and procedures. Is there something, but even though we're voting on the document that controls their operation, do they have anything they want to see changed or input?
I'll, I'll try to make note of that and let them know on the meeting on the twenty-eighth that, hey, this public hearing is going on. If there's anything, feedback you want me to provide to the commissioner, um, let me know.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on three?
Nope.
Four. The thing I have on four is, you know, it pops up later on and I was trying to find it. Under row dwellings, uh. Uh, four eleven.
Four eleven.
Row dwellings, F, single family dwellings. We spell out one and then in parentheses put the number one. Later in the guidelines here someplace, we're not consistent. So it'll come up later here in a little bit, but I just wanted to point out, this is what I was going to refer to.
Yep. I'm assuming your preferences have the one spelled out and then the number behind it?
That is my personal preference.
Yeah, that's my preference too, because that's how we're supposed to be doing it, so. Yeah, if you find any of that kind of stuff, even though I know that's relatively small potatoes, let me know, because that bothers me to no end when I find those inconsistencies.
Any other definitions of anything?
No.
Well, I guess that was a dead horse that we did beat. When we went through it the first time.
You deserve the right to come back and talk about building.
Yeah, I think that one's going to come back up.
I'm at five oh four oh nine.
Five. Oh four oh nine.
So my question is, in that sentence, um, it's, it spells out twice principal, principal use.
Yes.
I, I just don't know what Joe means by, by putting it after the end and or sign again.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Maybe it's something that wasn't there before that kind of.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that is weird, I'll have to look back to see how that happened. It's probably just supposed to be principal and or accessory use, that second principle.
That would make sense, yeah.
Yeah, that, something got jumbled around there.
Oh, the, just the.
Yeah, it says principal, comma accessory, comma and or principal use, so there's a redundancy there that needs to be addressed.
So the first principle should say principal use, not.
Yeah, it probably should say principal and or accessory use.
So any structure, lot or tract shall be permitted to contain more than one authorized principal use and or principal accessory. Or accessory.
It should, one authorized principal and or accessory.
And or accessory unless otherwise expressed.
Or one principal. I'll, I'll fix it, I know what it's supposed to say, I don't want to do off the top of my head, I know what it's supposed to say though, it needs fixed. Cause you can't have just an accessory use on a, we've always taken the position, use-wise. You can't have an accessory use on a property without a principal use because it'd be accessory to nothing. And that's how we prevent people from buying vacant lots in the township, building garage, who, someone who lives elsewhere, not in the township, from buying a vacant lot and putting up a garage that they're just going to store their car in. And we don't want Genoa Township to become the offsite storage for people in other communities.
I'm in the, in the use now, oh yeah, that's five six. Five six, we talked about this before, bed and breakfast. My, my thing with bed and breakfast is I think it should not be a principal use. I think it should become an accessory use. Because we always, when we talk about it, we always envision it, I mean, I always envision it at least, that it goes with a residence. That's why I think it should be an accessory use.
Which section are you referring to again?
This is page five six.
Five six, bed and breakfast.
So right now, it's, this is a principal use table, so it would be a principal use?
Mm-hmm.
I just see it more always as, I mean, this is, this is, we, we go back about this definition, okay? And in my opinion, a bed and breakfast is a place where someone lives and he rents out a room or two rooms to people and he provides breakfast. That's why I see it more as an accessory use, because you would have to have an actual residence with it and it couldn't be by itself a bed and breakfast. Like it wouldn't be like a hotel, it's a bed and breakfast.
Then it's in a principal structure, it's a conditional use of a principal structure.
Well, is that a condition, that, that's, that's on there?
It's under C, right? So residential and S R, S is permitted by a conditional use.
I agree, but what, the condition I thought was that it needed to be next to, uh, what was it? Next to, um, a commercial district, was that, was that, was that, uh? I mean, it's further on, it's not in the first thirteen. Next to, um, a commercial district, was that, was that, was that, uh, I mean, it's further on, it's not in the first thirteen.
So we do, we do define bed and breakfast on page four dash three as being an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, offering transient lodging accommodations, and it goes on and on, I won't read the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then, in the use chart on page five dash six, we are saying it's per, it would be permitted via the conditional use process in the rural residential district and the suburban residential district. And then we have it labeled as, um, S for P R D, which basically means, um, you know, it would be allowed in P R D if it was, you know, part of the plan development or viewed as part of the plan development. You couldn't like, do it after the facts, and if you were going to do it, you'd have to follow the same standards that the conditional use was. Um, and then we have it not allowed in any of the other districts. So then when you look for the conditional use standards, or in the plan development situation, just the plan development standards, which would be under the same section, that falls back into article seventeen, where all the other such standards are, and that would be seventeen eighteen, and the standard that Sebastian was referring to, is seventeen eighteen oh one, where we have such facilities shall only be permitted in residential district when the lot containing the use is situated immediately adjacent to a lot within a non-residential zoning district. So, to me, you're starting to, it's, i- in, in zoning land, you know, you have the old Euclidean zoning types, whereas it's very use-specific, and it's very, it's industrial, it's residential and commercial. An old traditional Euclidean zoning, that's the term for it, really didn't accommodate for uses that were both residential and commercial, or commercial and industrial, like, it, it just was very black and white and very rigid. Well, we know that's never been the case, nor is the case now. So to me, these bed and breakfasts are sort of that hybrid type of use, where they're both residential and commercial at the same time. So, my thought process was, we don't really have any language on them right now. I didn't want to rock the boat too much and say, oh, now you can just start putting bed and breakfasts in every single neighborhood in Genoa Township. I don't think that's what a lot of people moved here for, or expect, they don't want to all of a sudden see their neighbor, you know, candidly, it'd be mostly the straight districts, but we have some larger, you know, subdivisions in the straight districts, Lake of the Woods. You know, if you live in the middle of Lake of the Woods, all of a sudden, you want your neighbor to turn their house into a bed and breakfast operation? So to me, I was trying to sort of balance everything and figure out, okay, where would it be not so shocking to see a use like that pop up? And to me, it's like, well, it's sort of, wha- what we lack here in Genoa is transitional zoning districts. That was not a bridge I wanted to cross with this amendment, I could see us doing something like that in the future, where you have these zoning districts that service the buffer between commercial and residential, and you come up with the types of uses that you might see there, where there's sort of a little bit of both. Bed and breakfasts would be one of those, so absent of the transitional zoning district, we have to work under. The best I could come up with was, as a conditional use standard, say, okay, we're gonna allow them, but only on lots that are adjacent to existing commercial. So, the commercial end of that business matches the commercial zoning on the one side, but the residential end still matches the residential zoning on the other side. So I was just trying to come up with that sort of co- compromise, essentially, that was my theory.
My, my problem with this is, is that the lots that do touch commercial zoning are lots where the houses are smaller, okay? Uh, so it's like, that, that makes no sense, it makes sense that if you have a bed and breakfast, that it would be on the other side of Hoover or around Hoover. So by putting that rule in, you make it like, in the place where you don't really want it, so I think the rule is not a good rule. Plus, also, the definition states it's in a residential thing, so it's also weird then to put it in a commercial district. So that's why I'm like, maybe you could put it on, uh, on, where houses have enough acreage or something, I mean, you, you need to find another rule for it, and also the, the fact that the owner needs to be, it needs to be owner-occupied, and the owner needs to be living there at the time when these people, um, wh- when people would be, um, renting, staying there. And, and you couldn't rent your whole house, you could also put that in there, it only could be a part of the house. Like, I mean, I, I think those rules would, way, would suit, suit the code better, in my opinion.
So here's my problem with whether it's bed and breakfast or the Airbnbs. And it's something, Joe, that you said, a- and I, I, I get it, I mean, it's something that you said at the last meeting, where the Board of Trustees has essentially directed the zoning and development department not to be heavy-handed in enforcement. And I just see this opening up a Pandora's box, that we already know that, I, I, I mean, whether it's the trailer repair guy down the street here, or the lawnmower repair guy here on the other end of Big Walnut Road, and some of the other issues that I've been aware of over the years, right, wrong, or indifferent, the trustees at the time have made decisions that, about enforcement. I don't see this being a good thing in light of the conscientious decision that we're not going to have strict enforcement of the zoning resolution.
I wouldn't say we're not gonna have strict enforcement, I think it just depends on, you know, the topic and the legal advice we're given.
How do you even enforce this? I mean, some of the conditions that you're bringing up, he can't get into their house.
Well, I agree, but then that will happen anyhow, even if you put it in here or not.
Well, if they're not, I mean, we can look up whether it's owner-occupied, because I mean, we'll be able to see if they're getting, I mean, that tax credit or not. Um, that's easily to verify on the auditor site. Um, you know, we do have to take people at their word, that what they're telling us they're going to do is true, and then if we get evidence that it's not true later, we do proceed with enforcement and say, hey, you're actually not in terms. So, like, if they, someone came in with a bed and breakfast, says, well, I'm not actually gonna live there, I would say, well, then you're not a bed and breakfast pursuant to def- article, the definition article four, I don't know what you're proposing, you're proposing hotel at that point, if you don't live there. Uh, but to your point, I can't go in and see how many rooms they're renting out a- in that point. Like, there is that sort of gray area where, like, I wish zoning was perfect and could nail all those things down, but I don't think that's just, you know, realistic. The building code would kick in with a lot of these things, and probably take care of some of the stuff I think we're concerned about, because they're gonna say, well, if you're living there, but then you're also having public there and you're running a business operation, I gotta imagine that trick is all sorts of building code requirements.
But that means you've got to get the fire department and Marshal Cato out to-
Yeah, if it's a business, he probably would have to do an inspection.
Yeah.
And that would fall under his jurisdiction. My concern is, just because the use is complicated, doesn't mean we, we can just, and my advice is, we've got to come up, we've got to figure out how we're gonna handle all these uses, because otherwise, if you leave it empty, and someone comes in, someone could read your code and say, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, your code doesn't restrict them, it doesn't say I can't do it. Silence is sort of like, means it goes, generally, correct? I mean, if there's nothing in the code that says anything that you can't do it?
It depends, in the sense that part of the law is that restriction on someone's properties to be strictly construed, but a fair amount of zoning resolutions also in the various districts say, here are our permitted uses, and anything that's not a permitted use is a prohibited use, so.
We do have that language, so there is that.
I, I mean, I would fail-safe, find it hard to believe that with-
But I think if we were to put no across that entire line of bed and breakfast, I don't think you'd be able to do that, because you'd be saying, you couldn't do any bed and breakfasts in Genoa Township. I was always under the, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I was always under the impression that you can't just outright prohibit a, a use completely from a township, you have to at least theoretically allow it somewhere. Like, that was always why you have to write, allow sexually-oriented businesses, I thought, was, otherwise-
Why'd I have to look at five nineteen oh two A once again? Because it lists the various purposes that the township can consider in terms of the reg- the zoning regulations. So, in terms of with the use, I'd have to look to see what it says those specific purposes are, and it would be you folks and then the trustees looking at those purposes and saying, with this purpose, do we want to permit or prohibit this particular use in these particular areas?
Yeah, I just didn't know, is the township able to say, we just don't want this used completely?
You'd have to give me a specific use.
Could the township say, we just don't want to allow bed and breakfasts at all?
I've never considered that issue.
Okay, that's, that's fair. It's a fair answer. I don't thi- obviously, we haven't either, so, um, that, that's something we can look into on that topic.
But we have a very different view of what we've been operating under for a very long period of time.
Yes, that would be.
I would feel uncomfortable with that at this moment, to specifically preclude something across the board.
Now, if we want to say, hey, yeah, we're technically gonna allow them, but we're just gonna make it really, like we do with sexually-oriented businesses, to be honest, where we allow them, but it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna be very stringent on it, we could do that.
I mean, it's just my chip's perspective, I think those, th- those are apples and oranges, because there's a clientele that comes along with a sexually-oriented business that we don't necessarily want to promote. But m- my concern from a fundamental standpoint of the z- the zoning code or the zoning resolution, I mean, we talk about why do people come here, why do people move to Genoa Township? It's because it is, it's a nice place to live.
Mm-hmm.
That's just it, it's a nice place to live, not to come in, stay for a day or two, get breakfast and leave. It's a nice place to live. And so, I, I mean, w- we can talk about the history of all the people that moved out of Columbus and came north, and all those properties turned into rentals and things like that, and the, the problems that come with non-owner-occupied residences, and how that decreases values, it decreases the value of a community. I just see this as opening a box that we will never be able to keep a lid on. And I think it, I think it goes against everything that the community is based on, if you will.
No, I, I understand that. Now, we can't regulate in a single-family neighborhood whether your neighbor decides to rent out their house to someone or not, in terms of becoming a rental house.
I understand that, and I, I get that, I mean, that's just-
Yeah, that's just beyond our abilities. Again, as far as I know, beyond our-
But when they invite people, well, yeah.
But I, I, I agree wi- wi- with you too, I mean, I, I don't want people to rent out their whole house for a frat party, I agree with that, but you can, you can change, you can put in these rules in bed and breakfast, and say that something like that would not be allowed. First of all, it needs to be owner-occupied, and you can make an assessment on how many people, or how many rooms, or that you even cannot rent out a whole house, because then you would be renting a house, then, then you would fall under another code. So, I mean, we, we can set these, these rules ourselves, so, like, if, if, if that's what we're afraid of, because I, I still believe that people will still Airbnb, um, rooms out here, I mean, people do this, rent a damn. And I agree, it's a nice place to live, but it's also a nice place to make a living, and if you have a nice property and you want people there for one night, once in a while, I don't see the problem with it. That's, as long as we, like, I don't want party mansions either, I, um, and a whole bunch of people just buying up houses just to rent out. I agree, I don't want that either, but that's how we can, we can write these rules here ourselves, so. Can make sure that that doesn't happen, I mean, it might happen, but at least we have these rules, and if, if, if someone does complain, they can look at these rules and say, hey, look, this is what is allowed, that is not what allowed, and at least they have rules on to fall back to, so.
Okay, I could maybe carry that discussion on to the next time, when we talk about building hacks as well? Think about it a little bit more?
Well, sure, because it's gonna come in the, I mean, in the conditional, uh-
Yeah, it'll come up during the conditional use review, or standards in article seventeen.
That's, that's also why I brought it forward, that in my opinion, it shouldn't be a principal use, an accessory use would at least already make it better, in my opinion.
And then you would like to look at the location based on size, either by size of dwelling and size of property-
I'd probably interest-
versus location in relation to districts.
Yeah.
I guess when I'm thinking of these types of uses, I'm not thinking of someone who necessarily, oh, I have a house, I'll rent out a couple of rooms. I'm thinking of like what you see out east on the beach, where like, they bought the house solely with the purpose of it's primarily going to operate as a, they're going to rent out rooms, they happen to live there and be the caretaker of the property, but that's, it's sort of like a live-work situation. To me, that's why it's a principal use and not accessory use, because it's not, oh, I just happen to live here, I'm gonna rent out a room and make some extra money on the side, that's sort of the Airbnb rental area.
Well, I, I disagree, c- 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 if you see your definition, I disagree, like, I feel like then you're really talking about a rental or hotel more.
Well, and maybe that's where we need to make adjustments to the definition.
Yeah.
May- maybe my definition isn't solid enough on that point of, this is really a commercial operation that just hap- you just happen to live in, to operate, as opposed to your house that you happen to rent out a room in.
Well, I, I don't want to make it, I, I don't want to make it into a commercial operation, I need, I think it needs to be residential with a small-site commercial for bed and breakfast, I think, otherwise you fall under hotel or some other definition, in my opinion.
What you're saying is it has to be an owner-occupied building?
A limited amount of rooms, maybe two or something, I don't know. That, like, I mean, I don't know if you can put the limit on guests, but, I mean, at least you can put a limit, well, maybe you can, but-
I'd have-
And none of that's enforceable, because he can never step foot in their house.
No, I, I agree, but it's, technically, nothing is gonna be really enforceable, even if we say like, hey, it's not allowed. What are you gonna do then? It's also not really enforceable.
So where would your, and this is a personal opinion for you, where would your demarcation be between primary use and accessory use? From a definition perspective, then?
What, what do you mean exactly?
So you're wanting to say that a primary residence that Joe Smith lives in, and he wants now to operate a bed and breakfast, he lives there.
Yes.
The primary use is for him to live there, that's the primary use in the building. But all of a sudden, he is now running a bed and breakfast that he is, and that's a-
Maybe it's a percentage.
Business operating there.
Yeah.
So, and accessory use, and if you look at the definition versus a primary use, the primary use is now a business, basically a location, that's, it is his dwelling, but it's also operating a business, which in my opinion would be a primary use. So, where, you think it should be an accessory use, so where is that line of demarcation between primary use and accessory use in your own mind?
Um, I, I think it needs to be defined by maybe a percentage of the house that will be used for-
A percentage of time or a percentage of space?
Space, I would think.
Percentage of space.
Of a house, I mean, because there's other, there's other things in our code that also do that, like, um, um, when you have a business in your home, uh, what is that called? Oh, how much population does that do? Like, it can only be so much percentage of your, of your, of, of the amount of your, uh, square footage of, in your house. And then even then, there is like, uh, I think a high mark, I think it's like six hundred square foot. Like, there was even a limit, even, like, if you would have a huge house that you, there's still a limit.
So, we could do that limit, I've just, but to chip, to Mr. Welch's point, I could put that line on the form, how much square footage of this is gonna be devoted to this use, and they're just gonna write down whatever the code says, they're gonna write down, oh, they allow me up to six hundred, I'm writing six hundred. Once I issue that permit, I have no way of going back in there, into that house and verifying it. They could use eight hundred, they could use a thousand, they could use the whole house. Unless they basically rat themselves out, for lack of a better term, I'm just, I, by posting it online that the whole house is available or something, and I happen to see it and can use that as evidence, it's gonna be very difficult, if I get a complaint, to prove that they're not complying with their permit, because I can't go into that, to your point, I can't go into that house.
I could also make an argument that it's a primary use even by percentage, because you're using the kitchen to feed them, you're using the family room to, whatever, they're using all these different rooms. So it automatically becomes over fifty percent of the house, unless it's just a massive house, and it's like, the grandparents wing what they're using. So that's why I'm wondering how you get to, how do you, how are you gonna distinguish between that? Because you're using your entire structure for the business.
Yeah, I mean, in general, people in a bed and breakfast come at late at night, stay, stay and get breakfast and are gone, it's, it's, it's like, uh, like, it's, it, they, they're not staying there to actually spend time in your, in your garden, because then I feel like you, you would be something else, it's transient lodging, so.
I will throw out, the state is looking at possibly, just like telecommunications towers and wind farms and solar farms, my understanding, the legislature is looking at this topic to see, A, whether they're even gonna allow us to regulate and prohibit, allow them, or whether they're gonna tell us, no, you have to allow them everywhere, and you get no control, just like sort of the Ag situation. Or whether or not they're gonna say, okay, you can regulate them, but you can only regulate X, Y, and Z in certain circumstances. I tend to think it's probably gonna go to, towards the latter. Um, but there is a big push, I think, in certain circles, the real estate circles, especially in those lakeside communities, and a lot of the vacation spots where they want the rentals, because people own those properties and they want to generate the income, and they're putting a lot of, I think there's pressure being put on by certain people to get commu- local community control out of the way, and just let them run those things, so, it may end up being answered for us by the state, um, but I doubt that'll happen quickly. Like, I, I don't think you're gonna see anything in the next couple of months, unless they really surprise me.
We're past ten, we're done for the night, uh, so, need a continuance motion, please.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have moved to continue the public hearing for the subject zoning text amendment-
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have moved to continue the public hearing for the subject zoning text amendment dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, zoning commission case number twenty twenty-four dash zero five to February tenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M in the Genoa Township Hall.
Second discussion, roll.
We'll call Mr. Ben Eric.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Teisman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes.
Uh, next meeting, February tenth, twenty twenty-five, Joe, any other business before us?
Uh, no, it's just, I think you still have a general public comment period on your agenda.
I am done tonight, so. No, I'm done, we're done with the night, unless I legally have to. I don't think I do. I don't think I have. Alright, motion to adjourn, do I have one?
So, moved.
All in favor? I oppose.
I'm sorry, the motion to adjourn was.
Motion to adjourn was by Mr. Welch, second. Second. All in favor? I oppose, done, meeting closed at ten oh seven P M.